Please rise for invocation by Pastor Scott Kirchner, Christ and King Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God, thank you so much for the opportunity to gather in this place, public forum, to be able to seek your guidance and your wisdom. I love Port Orange. I thank you for the beautiful city that we live in. It is one of the best cities in the world, I believe, and I thank you for the people that make up that beautiful city. Thank you for all of the elected officials that are here tonight to lead us in a new decade, 2020. I pray your blessings upon them and upon our community. I pray that you'd help us tonight to be quick to hear and slow to speak and slow to get angry. Help us to have your eternal wisdom. You promised to give it to us if we ask it, and we're asking tonight for wisdom for our leaders as they guide us and direct us in this new decade and all the great things that have come for our community. Bless our people, protect our city. God, help us to just be a light that shines not just in this area of Florida but in all the country. God, we thank you for the opportunity and privilege we have to be here tonight and for all of those who are leading in our community. I ask your blessings upon them and their staff and this meeting this evening. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Tremont.
Here.
Councilmember Stilner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bastian.
Mayor Burnett.
Here. Consent agenda items, public comments on consent. Oh, wait a second. Before I do that, I need a motion for approval of tonight's agenda as posted.
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor of approving tonight's agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public comments on consent agenda items, anyone? On items on the consent agenda. There being nobody?
Mayor, I'd like to pull an item.
Make a motion, pull.
I'd like to pull items 7C and 7D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Pull items 7C and 7D from consent. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any other such such motions? There being none, may I have a motion for approval of the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, resolutions involved, call the roll.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont.
Yes.
Councilmember Stilner.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, four oh, so that's 6A, 6B, 7A, 7B, eight, nine, 10, and 11, which brings us to 7C.
Question and a comment on 7C?
Okay.
Uh, this agenda item is about 400 pages and the recommendation is to award the contract to five of the bidders that were compliant with the ITB. And I read through the whole thing. Took me a while to find the five. My question is, is the reason you did five because each of the agencies have different staff competencies?
Jamie Miller, Admin Services Director. We did take the approach and historically we have awarded our temporary services to more than one vendor. We do this in an attempt to get a bigger pool of candidates to pull from at the most competitive price. We do find sometimes the vendors are more responsive than others and and we will utilize those first. So our approach at this point is we haven't gone out to bid for temp services in a couple of years. So we wanted to cast the net wide and be able to go to different companies based on whatever need that have. Some of them specialize in, say, accounting or technology positions, and we wanted to be able to utilize those services to get the best candidates possible.
Okay, so then my follow-up question would be, if there are two companies that have the same specialties, how do you decide which one to do? Or do you ask for candidates from both and then the user department will interview candidates from both agencies?
Uh, so they do provide a different, each company provides a markup rate. So we would probably first look to see who has the lower markup rate for that position and solicit candidates from that pool. If we did not receive a adequate candidate pool or didn't feel that the other candidates, we would then go to the next agency with the next lowest markup rate to get some additional candidates for that position.
Okay, and then my final question, given the number of positions that you occasionally have to fill using a temporary worker and five companies, do you have a matrix? How does the department that needs somebody know who to call or is everything coordinated through human resources?
It's centralized through human resources.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Not on 7C.
Anyone else on 7C?
[inaudible]
Okay, is that better?
And might I, might I add, ladies and gentlemen, if, if you can't hear us, we do have audio devices outside that augment the, uh, augment the, um, system here. That's also available.
Thanks for letting us know. Well, that may have a motion for approval.
Move to approve 7C.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us to 7D.
Uh, 7D is the extension with the current temporary staff provider, and I understand why because there are some people currently fulfilling functions. Here's my question and then I guess a comment. One question would be, at the point that somebody currently doing a function no longer needs to do that function, you no longer will use this company.
Correct.
And so what is the shortest length of time that an assignment will be concluded and what is the longest assignment potentially?
So we could very well have somebody who is on assignment currently that we decide tomorrow not to continue services with them. Particularly, and just as an example, in our customer service department, we currently are using a temp to, if for some reason that decided that that wasn't working out, we may decide that we want a new person and then we would go to the new companies to provide that. As far as some of the more longer-term projects that you see going on is there are some people who have been assisting the departments with the backfilling on the ERP. We anticipate there's still some work being done and some tweaks and, and so we're trying to shoot for, we're anticipating around March that a lot of those positions will probably sunset off, but some of the departments may, if they have that trained person and the funds, it, it may go a little bit past March, but that's what we're anticipating is for March to be that kind of sunset period for those assignments.
Okay, and then I guess my comment would be, given that some things carry forward, but you knew the contract was going to be ending in 2020, is there a way in the future just to think about, you know, figuring out what's going to sunset and starting a procurement process sooner so that if the current vendor isn't going to continue, we're not cut short? Obviously, this was an easy fix by continuing this contract, but I can think of some things that might be mortar and bricks where we could end up caught.
Excellent. Thank you.
And we usually try, we try to be ahead of that, but sometimes, uh, um, we get caught up and put in a spot, and you're absolutely right. We're hoping from a, from a financial perspective that the workday will give us enough lead on contracts in our experience that if it takes nine months, well, think of the golf course, for instance. Golf course isn't a two-month deal. It's a nine to 12-month deal. So we're thinking way ahead on that. Some of them are a little bit easier and, and we'll have a better grasp at looking forward. But, but we have been caught a little bit unaware, not unaware, but without enough time and, and a spot. So we'll, we'll keep on looking at that and try to get better.
Okay, thank you. So with that.
Anyone else on 7D? I'll take your motion.
I'll move to approve 7D.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and that brings us to, says in participation on agenda, I have Mr. Brian Spees. Where's Brian Hayden? Here he is. You fly down that slope pretty good.
Experience. Mayor, council, thank you for hearing me tonight. I know that this is kind of a done deal and I just wanted to voice my concerns and my opinion in regard to the newly proposed church on Spruce Creek Road by Central Park adjacent to or perpendicular to the Neighbor's Ice Cream. My really only concern, obviously, there's going to be travel, with anything new, you're going to have traffic, you know, congestion, things like that. That, that's fine. I just think that with all of the vacant and abandoned buildings that are within the city, particularly by US-1, that this could have maybe gone somewhere else. I know sometimes you don't have a choice to do that, and like I said, this is kind of water under the bridge, but I, I just, I see where, well, what happens in the future when something, if something happens like at Williamson and, uh, Willow Run where that was abandoned for so long, then something's going to get built and there's going to be an eyesore there until a contingency plan goes along. And you all know, because I just spoke with you today about it or yesterday about it, Mayor, where you're just getting a plan into place now for that. So I just would like to see, uh, in the future, if it's possible, things to be steered towards current brick and mortar and plans for, you know, a contingency of, you know, how do we know if this is going to be a successful venture for this church? Thank you.
I'm sure we'll be seeing you again on a different item later on.
You will.
Thanks, Brian. That brings, that's the only one I had?
Okay.
That brings us to council comments. Let's start with you, Scott.
I just wanted to make a motion that we immediately and as quickly as possible return the outdoor temperature of our city back to a reasonable level.
Well, that's the Chamber of Commerce's responsibility.
But I, but I, but I want to, I want to give a shout out to resident in the front seat, in the front row here, who's still found to wear shorts because he's the fighting Florida spirit. No, I don't have anything else to offer.
Very good. Chase, what you got tonight?
I can't top that. No comments tonight.
Marilyn, you got anything tonight?
Nothing.
Uh, Jake, I had two items. We talked earlier about Big Lots, and they did it again this weekend with the big signs, not only in the right of way, but in the median, in the middle of the road. And the first time that happens, okay, maybe they should be talked to and okay. And second time that happens, you say, listen, you know better. This is what, about the fifth time? They know better. What's going on with enforcement activity with Big Lots?
Mayor, back in February of 19, I believe, uh, February 19, we sent a letter to the owner, general manager of Big Lots, the owner of Big Lots Corporate, the general manager of Big Lots Local, and the owner of the property, letting all three of them know that putting the signs in the median is unauthorized. The general manager via, I think, our one-on-one when I went over to the store, said that Corporate puts those down. They don't have anything to do with it. And I said, I really didn't care who put them down. It's his responsibility to make sure that they get removed as soon as he sees them. And the, the owner of the property also sent them a letter saying, look, you leased, you leased property from me and, and I don't want the city on me because your corporate's breaking the, uh, breaking the code for signage. So we thought we were good. It lasted, well, it lasted quite a while, almost a year, but we saw them creeping up again. Uh, we gave them a warning and then that, that it was starting to happen again. And it happened last Sunday, as you're well aware, because you saw them and called me and I saw them and didn't call you, but saw them nonetheless. And so we, I've directed that our code enforcement people give them the notice of violation. They had the warning last year, the notice of violation, and we'll proceed through the magistrate to, uh, right, right them from doing wrong. If they keep on doing it, we'll just start finding them and till, till their pocketbook starts to hurt.
Yeah, I just sufficiently annoyed. The first, second, and third time, you would expect that they'd come into compliance, but this is ridiculous and appreciate you staying on top of the force.
Well, 90% of the people that, as soon as we let them know, and it happens a lot for garage sales, it happens a lot for real estate agents when we let them know that they can't put their signs, uh, for any amount of hours in, in the median, especially on Dunlot and Williamson, uh, US-1, that, that...
In the middle of the road.
In the middle of the road, which means they must have gone out there to do it, which is being in a median is unsafe in the first place unless you're in a crosswalk. So they usually go get their signs right away and, and take care of it. So Big Lots is...
It's kind of a slap in the face to everybody else that follows the regulations.
Yeah, they're, they're the only people that continue. So we'll, we'll keep pressing with that and I'll keep informed as the, as it goes through the violation, code violation process and the magistrate.
The other thing I wanted to share tonight is, some of you may know, but a lot of people don't, I wanted to mention, uh, the Port Orange Historic, the Port Orange Historical Trust, that was a small mouthful, the Museum and History Center. They operate at 740 Commonwealth Boulevard, just outside of Busman Park. And if anybody hasn't been there, their hours are from 10 to 1 on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It's worth taking the time to go down there. Certainly, I think it's worth getting an inexpensive membership to, to support them, but they have done a terrific job of turning that little building into a museum that reflects the history, 150 years of history of the city of Port Orange. And I just wanted to give them a plug and a shout out for the work that they've done down there. So they do have a Facebook page, Port Orange Historical Trust, so you can find out a little bit more that way. But if you get a chance to pop in and see, they're open Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 10 to 1. So check it out. With that, that brings us to Citizens Advisory Committee for TPO, Mr. Bobby Ball. Happy New Year, sir.
Happy New Year. Bobby Ball with the CAC from TPO. We had our monthly meeting and not a whole lot on it for the agenda tonight, but the main topic was supporting a resolution to go to the board with alternative number three, which is a partial clover leaf to the I-95 Pioneer Trail Interchange. And outside of that, we had a whole lot of discussion about the upcoming long-range transportation plan process. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Bobby, anybody? For being none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve Ball.
That brings us to item 14, report from Kipper Sports on the Cypress Head Golf Course. Mr. Bob.
How are you, sir?
Happy New Year.
Thank you. First off, members of the council, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, I need to apologize. I kind of goofed. I have no other, made a mistake and I missed the council meeting on the first of the year, here, seven, so I do apologize. Promise that won't happen again, but from what I hear tell, I missed a good meeting, so.
You missed a fantastic meeting, but you got a good one tonight.
I do. Apparently, there's a, there's a big crowd out there.
Oh, they're all here for you.
I hope not. Um, I'm giving a report for the golf course. My name is Bob Duquette, General Manager for Cypress Head Golf Course. Given the report, this one is going to be actually at the end of, for November of 2019. I'm going to go over a little bit of the revenues for November, finished slightly lower than our projected budgets. Our range was higher. Pro shop revenues were definitely higher. Our payroll for the month was a little bit higher as well for a projected budget, and our expenses were finished lower than the budgeted amounts. Going into the rounds, tee sheet activities, combination here, 36, 3,641 total rounds, broken down to 3106 paid, 315 annual with Cypress Pass member rounds and 220 other rounds. We had a little bit of some course and grounds activities. We are always evaluating our maintenance department. Our superintendent did leave unexpectedly in the month of November. I do have our new superintendent, which I'll introduce later, Darren Baki, who was actually a local Port Orange person, who has been in superintendent business for over 22 years. So we'll introduce him afterwards. You can ask him any questions, but he joined us in December. Well, he's been a great addition already to our team. We, we had 1,142 in gift sales. We had $8,000 worth of pro shop sales, which is good, and we're continuing to offer lesson packages for both beginners, advanced, and in particular, right now, junior programs. We've become, new assistant has spearheaded our junior program on Saturdays, making sure that, that's becoming a priority for us in the city of Port Orange. We have a great avenue to help out getting some of the kids interested in the golf programs. So that's been one of our, our major proponents. Of course, we always continue the visibility at Cypress Head on various social medias, and our course summaries have improved. In the month of November, our 9.1 for our course rating of 8.4 and our service rating for customer service is a 9.5. We had a meeting with Dr. Nels, Niels, excuse me, I think he's the finance director. He's asked that we have a little bit more of a kind of a snapshot approach to a report. So I think that was also included in that aspect that you have, a little bit more in terms of some of the graphing, in terms of our monthly budget as well as for activities in November that we did for action items, and also broken down in terms of the round segments for Port Orange, Florida, non-residents, comms, golf now trades. So it's a little bit more broken down. And if you look at the numbers, that we are very good for the Port Orange residents. We get our, majority of our play out of our Port Orange residents, which is a great benefit to the city and the community itself. In this case here, we're also started with a review summary from prior year to the current year, and in this case here, our course ratings improved from an 8.4 to a 9.1. So very excited about the, the direction that Cypress Head is going right now. And I have to agree with you, Scott. Saturday, we had a tremendous day because it was a perfect sunshine Chamber of Commerce day. Did a little bit over 180 rounds, and today we did about 20. And they were all from Canada.
I wonder why.
They're all from Canada.
They're all from Canada in shorts and walking. So I'm open for any questions.
Why don't you, before we get into questions, why don't you bring up the new superintendent?
Sure, absolutely.
And then we'll make him go away, then we'll grill you.
Okay, sounds good. I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, Darren Baki. Grew up in Port Orange, Florida. Went to graduate from Spruce Creek High School, then went to University of Florida, graduated from there with a horticulture, agronomy, turf degree. Have been a superintendent in the area for 22 years. Halifax Plantation 18, the bulk of my career. Short stint at LPGA. You probably heard what happened there with the company that I took the job with.
A little bit of a sale.
Yeah, scuttlebutt, and one in a million happened, and the company that I took the job with backed out. The new company did not rehire me. So I was on the market again and landed at Cypress Head. I've actually worked here before, summer break in 94, I believe, I actually worked at Cypress worked at Cypress Head, so. First job on a golf course and now I'm here.
Most important thing we got to know is you know what weeds look like, right?
Absolutely. And we've got plenty to tackle there, so.
Yeah, uh-huh, good.
Got a lot to do.
All right.
Any questions?
Should be at home for you. Cypress Head designed by the same folks as LPGA, correct?
Yep, yep. Arthur Hill did the Hills course at LPGA.
Can you widen the fairways just a little bit while you're around?
I could, if it makes it easier, sure.
We may all submit a list later of some favorable locations.
I'll talk to you about the second hole later on.
Okay, yeah, that's a tough one.
Well, very much.
All right, nice meeting.
Thanks, dear, welcome home.
Questions for Bob, why don't we start with Marilyn?
I did note the graphs pleasantly. I still think a number of your measures I have questions about, and particularly as I've gone over last year's and tried to look at big picture. I've talked with the manager about it, and so you will be getting some suggestions for coming about information that I think will help us understand. My concern is the roller coaster that we seem to be riding with the golf course, and I understand that some of that may be related to personnel changes, but at some point, we need to get off that roller coaster, smooth it out a little.
I agree wholeheartedly.
So I think in the interest of productivity, I'll convey my comments to the manager. I've been working on some things and we'll move from there.
Would love to meet and have that discussion, that would be awesome, and I agree with you, that's why Darren is on board right now. We only want to keep this on an upward movement and forget the roller coaster ride up and down, absolutely.
Well, I think his credentials are great, the great golf courses, and so I'm looking forward to him bringing that to Port Orange, because I'd really like it to be the course I think all of us would like it to be the course that everybody talks about and wants to play at.
Absolutely, agreed.
Good. Chase, anything?
No.
Scott? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
It brings us to the public hearing portion of our meeting, and I'm going to anticipate that Community Development is going to request us to open items fifteen and sixteen together, even though we did not discuss that prior.
Yes, sir.
With that, item fifteen is, come on. Item fifteen is ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-eight, an ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, relating to comprehensive planning, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, amending the future land use designation plus or minus fourteen point four seven acres from Volusia County urban low intensity, zero point two to four acres to urban medium density residential, four to eight units per acre for property generally located on the south side of Fern Park Drive, east of Taylor Road and Crane Lakes at seventeen twenty-seven and seventeen thirty-seven Fern Park Drive, adding future land use policy two point one point seven, limiting density of subject property to six units per acre, providing for conflicting ordinances, severability, and an effective date.
Motion to approve ordinance number two zero one nine dash thirty-eight.
May I have a second?
Second.
The item has been properly motioned and seconded, is open for discussion. That brings us to item sixteen, which is ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-nine, ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, rezoning property consisting of approximately fourteen point four seven acres located on the south side of Fern Park Drive, east of Taylor Road and Crane Lakes from Volusia County, A2 rural agriculture, to planned unit development, PUD, and approving a master development agreement and conceptual development plan for the Florida Soul planned unit development, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was a mouthful.
Motion to approve ordinance number two zero one nine dash thirty-nine.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made and properly seconded. Both items are open for discussion. The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Penelope Cruz, planning. Since the mayor did such a great job describing the location, I'll skip that. I do want to just refresh-
No, 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 you don't have to skip it. I just read, I just read, you can, I can never match your eloquence.
So I just, the location map is on the screen right there. It is on the south side of Fern Park Drive, east of Taylor and Crane Lakes, approximately four and a half acres. Just to refresh the council's memory, in two thousand and eighteen, this property was annexed into the city of Port Orange, and as part of that discussion, it was documented that once a property is annexed, the next step is to apply city land use and zoning onto the property, and the staff report at that time indicated that the applicant would be following up with this proposed town home development. So that's where we're at tonight. Item fifteen is the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, which applies a city future land use to the property. What the applicant is requesting is a two-part request. The first is to change the future land use on the property from the Volusia County urban low intensity category, which is a maximum of four units per acre, to the city of Port Orange urban medium density category with the added policy of two point one point seven, which limits the density to a maximum of six units per acre. The proposed future land use designation with the density limitation increases the theoretical maximum number of units allowed on the property by twenty-nine units compared to what is currently allowed. It does result in a net increase in impacts to public infrastructure, however, the theoretical maximum impact analysis show that there is adequate capacity for potable water, sewer, schools, and solid waste to accommodate the proposed amendment. As for traffic, the analysis identified a segment that is slightly over capacity, but as with all developments, when there's an actual site plan proposed, a specific site development proposal will include the requirement to comply with the land development requirements for traffic concurrency, and at that time, based on what site is, site development is proposed, any impacted segments would have to either be addressed through an improvement or mitigated for. The next item on the agenda tonight is item sixteen. The applicant's request is to rezone the property-
Let's hold up.
From Volusia County, A2.
Hold on a second, Penny, please.
Okay, sorry.
If it's for me, just call, I'll call.
Hold on one second, Penny.
It's okay, it's fine.
Ladies and gentlemen, will everybody take about twenty seconds to make sure that their phones are on silent?
I'm going to call yours to make sure it is.
Believe me, I'm going to grab mine in two seconds.
Can you comment there? If you could go back for just a second, you mentioned something about a slightly over, or-
The segment of Taylor Road between-
Yeah, can you just touch on that?
Mm-hmm. So the analysis showed that that segment of Taylor Road between Crane Lakes and Summer Trees is slightly over capacity.
Currently.
Currently. And that's why we do that initial analysis at the planning stage of land use, so that we have that awareness early on, so as it moves through to zoning and then later, and then later, site design, we've already identified what the problem is and have been starting to work on the solution. It's not coming up for the first time at site design. So this is the planning phase of things, the issue is identified, and we start working through with the different agencies what that solution would be when a site plan is actually proposed for the property. Okay. So item sixteen on the agenda is the second application where the applicant is requesting to rezone from Volusia County, A2, to planned unit development and approval of the Florida Soul planned unit development master development agreement and conceptual development plan. The proposed MDA and concept plan constitutes a zoning document. It is not a full engineered site plan, it is a concept plan and a zoning document that establishes permitted uses and certain development requirements on the property. It does not grant approval for any specific development itself, but rather establishes that regulatory framework that can guide any future development. A specific site design is finalized with a site plan submittal that is required then to meet all the land development code requirements, as well as the proposed MDA. The subject, Florida Soul Master Development Agreement and Concept Plan provides that regulatory framework for the potential development of a maximum of eighty-four townhomes. You can see on the screen before you, the adjacent property to the proposed PUD is referenced in the PUD document as the access property. The access to the development would be provided through this access property at the signalized intersection of Taylor Road and Crane Lakes Boulevard, and if a site plan would be to, if this is approved and a site plan would be submitted, this access easement would need to be in place before that site plan would be approved. The proposed concept plan shows a development where the building setbacks and proposed parking exceed the city's land development code requirements. It also meets the city's requirements for landscaping, screening, and tree preservation. Some other things to point out on the property, there is an existing access easement, twenty-five foot wide access easement to the north of the property that is commonly referred to as Fern Park Drive. The property is not looking to be accessed through this easement, the access, like I said, would be through this adjacent access property at the signalized intersection. The access easement traverses to the north, to the existing access easement for Fern Park Drive traverses to the north of the property where you see the pink color, and then dips down and goes onto the actual property in the northeast, and then down the east side of the property. The, although it's not depicted on the current concept plan that's in your packet tonight, on the concept plan, the master development agreement, which supersedes the concept plan, the master development agreement is like the land development code for the property, the legal document, does include a twenty-foot building setback off of this existing easement. So although it's not depicted here on this existing concept plan, if this were to be approved tonight and a site plan would be submitted at some point in the future, this current layout would not be able to be developed as shown here. There would not be able to be any building within twenty feet of this red existing access easement. So I just wanted to clarify that. That is stated in the master development agreement that's in your packet, it's just the concept, plan is just a concept and doesn't reflect that. Again, just to clarify that it is the zoning document, it just lays out that framework. An actual site plan would have to come forward if it were to be approved, that would meet all the regulations in the MDA and the land development code. The proposed townhomes are shown to be two-story attached dwellings with garages grouped as either four or six units per building, with a maximum height of thirty-five feet, which is consistent with the dimensionable requirements for PUD zoning, as well as comparable conventional zoning categories in the city for this type of housing. So as we are familiar with, the council, the PUD zoning does allow for the flexibility to deviate from certain standards of the land development code. The applicant is requesting for one policy consideration through their proposed PUD request, and that is for off-site signage at Taylor Road. The configuration of the proposed development is the background, the need for this request. As you can see, the PUD property itself does not have frontage onto Taylor Road, and the access is being provided through the access property at the signalized intersection. So they are requesting to be able to have an off-site sign here at their main access to direct their residents to the property. This would be achieved if it's approved through an access easement between the two private property owners, and any signage would have to meet the city's land development code requirements with regard to design and landscaping. This is similar, just as an example, this is similar to an off-site signage request that's been approved by the council for Bella Oaks Town Homes and for the legacy of Crystal Lake Apartments on Clyde Morris, just as an example. Other developments that didn't have frontage on a major road and requested that off-site signage. So with that, staff is recommending approval of both of the items before you tonight, and the applicant is here and would also like to speak to their applications.
Let's hear it from the developer.
Good evening, Colleen Miles. Land Development Resource Group, on behalf of the property owner Danielle Garjula. The plan that staff did show, how do I make that sheet come up, I'm sorry, was modified to remove any impact to that easement that was shown, and the one that I gave you. Sorry.
You talking about the easement where the sign goes, or you talking about the one on the back?
No, the red easement that we saw. The plan has been modified to remove anything that would impact that, and I brought something to show you. I don't know, I think we can. I'm sorry.
There you go.
We're trying to make it bigger for you.
I need to make this thing.
Marquis.
So you can see up in the corner that we've removed anything that might impact that easement in any way from a building standpoint, and language has been added to the MDA, MDA to address that. I hope I'm speaking well enough.
Grab, yeah, grab the microphone.
I don't know what, questions I can answer for you. The staff has done an exceptional job on preparing the staff report and outlining any items that would be of concern that had been addressed. We've met all land development code requirements, as well as exceeded some relative to landscaping and smart growth. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Which end do we want to start in? You got a smile on your face, go for it, that's all we can-
I don't have any questions.
I just have one question for Penelope, actually, but I can save that for later on or ask now, it's just up to you.
Let's ask now, let's get it all out there.
Just a question in regards to traffic, this has been my only concern of this. There is a segment between Taylor Road and Crane, Taylor Road between Crane Lakes and Summer Trees Road, slightly above capacity. Can you explain why we would allow, why it's okay to add further development, given that we're already above capacity on a particular location? I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, but I want to, I want to have this explained to me.
Okay, so the phase that we're at right now is land use and zoning. So at that phase, we're analyzing whether it would be an appropriate land use and zoning and it would be compatible to the area and that those impacts can be addressed. As part of the proposed site planning that would follow if this is approved, as well as the proposed, there's also a project proposed at this time adjacent to this, the access property, and the city is in the process of obtaining that additional right-of-way along Taylor Road for the widening of Taylor, especially in that segment there that's failing. The way we're able to get that right-of-way is through that development moving forward as part of that development process, we are able to obtain that right-of-way. The county has those plans for Taylor Road designed, they're just accumulating the funding to move forward with it. So the way the concurrency works is if the zoning and land use is approved and then they move forward to submit their site plan, they would then submit their full transportation impact analysis based on what is actually proposed. They may not get the full eighty-four units, but once they're done with all their engineering and everything. So based on what's proposed, they do their impact analysis. They either will then have to build improvements to add the necessary capacity as part of their project. If you recall, for example, the Springs Apartments had to build some turn lanes and some other intersection improvements to add capacity in that area. So developments have options like that where they can build improvements to either the intersection or the segment of road that can add capacity, or they can pay into transportation fair share projects for projects that the cities in the county are currently working on to add that capacity. So one or both would be required in order to approve an actual site plan.
All right, so one follow-up question and then a clarification. The, according to the report that, correct me if I'm wrong, that the funding may not be there within the next ten or fifteen years, so does that mean we can have a project built in two years but still have to wait another twelve years before improvements are made? Is that how I'm understanding that correctly?
The full, the full Taylor Road widening, the complete Taylor Road project is-
Just that project is what they're talking about, okay.
Yes, yes.
So then the clarification is, is if it moves forward, because this particular section is above capacity, the developer is then required to pay into a fair share to improve and widen and allow for more capacity in that- and allow for more capacity in that particular region, correct?
They would have to pay into any project that's in that area. So not only if the, not only contributing towards the Taylor Road improvements, but also any other ones like Yorktown, any of the city's projects, Summer Trees. They also, depending, again, depending on that transportation impact analysis, would potentially need to make actual physical improvements to that signalized intersection area. For example, they would likely need to address the signal head and maybe some lanes there to address movements. So there's a variety of things that could lead to either physical improvements or physical improvements and mitigation. But all that would come with actual site design. Right now, we're in that planning and zoning phase where we, the land use and zoning is being analyzed, and you start planning ahead for what those impacts would be if this were to be approved.
Sure, and I understand we're talking about zoning, not a specific project, but I'm glad there's a project to get some visibility to it. I'll have more comments later, but that's all for questions there.
Scott?
Penny, don't go too far. So first of all, I want to thank Colleen. I appreciate the time to meet with her and talk about the project. So my concerns, and I express these with Colleen, are increasing density, current traffic issues that we clearly have there. Penny, you mentioned the phrase slightly overcapacity. How is that defined, actually? I mean, to me, it either seems like it's overcapacity or it's not. But how do we define slightly overcapacity?
If you see on page six, table five of the future land use amendment staff report, if not, I mean, I can just speak to it. The full capacity of the road is designed at seventeen thousand fifty trips. The current traffic counts are showing it at seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty, so it's one point seven six percent over full capacity. So that's...
I guess what I was asking is the phrase slightly something we come up with? Or is that like something?
It's just a smaller, yeah, it's the smaller percentage over capacity. It's not like a hundred and, you know, fifty percent over capacity or something like that. It was that under two percent.
And is all of that roadway belong to the county as well as the right-of-ways belong to the county? Or is some of that still belong to the state? Because doesn't that carry a state road designation on that?
Taylor is county, once it's Taylor.
So once it passes Summer Trees, the light of Summer Trees, it becomes county road and county right-of-way?
Williamson.
Williamson?
Yes.
Williamson's the divide.
All right.
Once you're outside of that Dunlott and Ninety-Five interchange area.
Okay. And when a developer develops a piece of property, and let's say they're paying into the future infrastructure, what percentage of that paying in covers? Because obviously, it's not, they're not paying for the full cost.
No.
And they don't pay for the, what the unknown costs are in the future, because the cost of those things seem to be going up so rapidly. That's one of the things we see here at the city. We also see it on the TPO, is that these projects that were approved and planned and all this stuff, you know, four, five, ten, fifteen years ago, now it's coming time to do some of those things, and the cost are three, four, five hundred percent greater than what anybody ever anticipated them to do. So can you speak to that? Like, how does that percentage, how does that formula work?
I'll speak to it briefly, and I believe the applicant has an engineer here that might be able to speak to it as well. So there's a formula when they do their traffic analysis. It shows the percentage of trips going through our projects that we're planning for improvements. So based on the percentage of those trips, the number of their trips that they would be contributing to that improvement, that's the percentage that they pay. That's why it's called fair share, proportionate fair share, because they pay their proportionate share of the capacity that they'll be taking up. And the city, as part of their formula, also charges a two-hundred percent multiplier above it to account for future costs. There have been projects that we've had to give refunds after they were completed because we charged that to have that buffer.
Okay.
And so we track that as it gets through, you know, construction. But we do account for future costs in the formula.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's my biggest concern with the project is, I'm just not a fan in this area of increasing density. And I know that there's some studies that suggest that even increasing this density could result in fewer trips, and we've seen plans and studies that suggest that, and it's just not how it turns out to be practical. So, but I appreciate the information, the insight. And then on the clarity for the perimeter that we're talking about that was in blue on Penny's. So by looking at this drawing here, are there retention ponds in that buffer, or are they outside the buffer? Or do they not count?
The easement. On this current proposed, again, this is not what's in your packet tonight. This is what is, this is what the MDA speaks to. So this is consistent with the master development agreement in your packet. It's just that this is a newer version of the concept plan, but it is consistent with the MDA. If the applicant, if the applicant is asking that the council consider this version tonight, that's at your pleasure. It appears that what they're showing is that there are no buildings abutting the access easement. The lands, it looks like this proposed retention pond is right adjacent to the outside, is outside of, but adjacent to the access easement, but not within it. What this, what this dashed line is right here is a building setback. So it's not applicable to ponds.
Yeah, that's what I guess I was asking.
Yeah, I think they're what they're...
A building cannot abut it, but a retention pond can abut it.
Yes.
Okay, and so would there, would there, just to clarify, so in the event, in the event this project were to be approved and built, is there emergency access to, other than the main drive area? I mean, how would, how would fire rescue access this if for some reason they couldn't get through this main area on the adjacent property?
So up to, right here, were these home, right here, yeah. Fern Park Drive, the dirt road that's there, the dirt access easement is an access easement if they needed to. However, this would, down here, the proposed, the proposed paved entrance to the signalized intersection would be the main paved, the only paved.
Right.
And site plans per code are only required to have one. It's subdivisions over twenty lots that are required to have the two. So this meets land development code as far as access.
Got it. That's all I got for right now.
Do... We spoke in November, and one of the things I always look for in things like that, this is, are there any public improvements that benefit not just the project, but the area in general?
Yes, the lift station is an upsized lift.
Pull the microphone up. That's Penny's fault.
Yes, it's okay, though. The lift station is an upsized lift station where currently there is no sewer in this vicinity. There is city water facilities, city water throughout this development, which will increase the fire suppression that currently doesn't exist. A fire truck can now circulate through this site, whereas if they go down Fern Park Drive, God forbid, they're going to have to back up. There's no way for them to turn around. And also, I don't believe there's any fire suppression on Fern Park Drive. I think they're going to have to use what's in the truck. We also are anticipating improvements at the signalization, the current signalization at Crane Lakes prior to the widening, which the widening also takes into account additional things. But I do have an engineer here to speak to the issue, if you'd like to speak with him.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Why don't we hit, that's technical, so why don't we hit that kind of towards the end?
Okay.
And the other question, the other thing I mentioned in November is I said that, are you planning a neighborhood meeting?
And we did conduct one, as you knew. We did it, I think it was November, when we originally talked. And I thought, and I'm not throwing you under the bus here, sir, but I thought you had brought a letter to the Crane Lakes HOA to let them know they were invited. We did hold the neighborhood meeting. I did submit a summary to staff outlining who was notified and, you know, what had transpired at that meeting.
I had visited the HOA a couple months prior.
Okay.
But, and not, but not since.
Okay.
So you've met with the neighborhood?
Not Crane Lakes.
Okay.
But they're here this evening.
Yeah, there are a number of them here. Okay. All right, let's hear from the engineer. Let's, I'm sorry, hold on.
Oh, that's a, well, you can go with the engineer if you want. My question is the Penny question.
Okay. Well, let's get your engineer on record.
Penny's been way too quick to sit down.
Cody Bogart with New Kirk Engineering. We designed the concept plan.
Okay. The thing that I want to lead off with, of course, is, and the most controversial part of this to me is the change in density. I know as long as property is owned by other individuals and their property rights, there's things that may happen that we may agree with, we might disagree with, but those property rights, as long as I don't own it, then I don't have a hundred percent say over it. And I get that. And certainly, I even remember when some subdivisions that are very popular, great additions to the city were built, because I've been here a year or two where people squawked about it, but they're good additions to the city if it's done right and if it's done proper. But now we're also getting to the point where we're concerned about the impact, and I'd like you to speak to the change in density and what that impact is going to have.
As far as the choice to go with six units per acre, that was up to the developer. And it wasn't, it wasn't a maximum allowable per the similar code through the city. So six was chosen. In regards to traffic, which was my main reason for being here, I can give you an idea of what kind of influx of trips, is what it's called, trips, which are basically just vehicles leaving and entering the site. For what it is now, the single-family homes for dwelling units per acre, maximum max out, it would cause an addition of five hundred and fifty-five trips per day. With six dwelling units per acre, this is what Councilman Scott mentioned, that it is less impactful per the ITE generation code, which has multiple equations and observations, calculations, studies done across the country for many different types of condo and townhouse homes. They have the ultra-urban ones, which decrease more because you have a wide variety of public transportation available for those people in downtown cities or closer to urban areas. But they also have a more intense trip generation for townhomes proposed like this one that are a little bit outside the city and don't have as much, you know, inkling to walk anywhere, ride a bike or a bus. But it would generate five hundred and five trips, which are fifty less per day. And to give, to give you a better understanding of that, because you can't picture five hundred cars on a road, you'd be looking at a decrease at the peak hour. So this is rush hour, leaving the house for work or coming back home after work and school. You're looking at a increase of eleven trips coming out of this site in the morning, and also another increase of eleven trips. And that, that's an increase of what it is compared to now. So the overall increase, you're looking at thirty-one cars and twenty-nine cars going in and out respectively. And that's during an hour, so it's not all at once. It's during that peak hour of daytime of people leaving or entering the site.
Of course, going five fifty-five to five oh five is nine point one percent less. Okay. What other questions do we have?
The, so that's, this is always an interesting part of the discussion on these trips, and because some of it, I guess, is theoretical, because you, you know, you, there's a formula that's utilized, right? But you never really know in practical application which you're, because demographics can change things and geographic location and stuff like that. And we've seen all around East Volusia County, actually, where that probably works out to be pretty close to that, and in other places where it's just, it's a lot of other transient traffic to that area. You know, so it almost seems like it depends on, well, who's living there? You know what I mean? Does that make sense? And so when you, when that particular formula that you're utilizing, who are those people that are in those trips? Is that, is that basically residents that would be living there?
Yes, and the studies do take into account of what kind of families or residents do live in these neighborhoods. And they are seeing as time goes on that the younger professionals and the older retirees tend to live in the low-maintenance type of lifestyle that these townhomes would offer. These are usually people with, excuse me, residents with no family. So you're having singular cars or double cars maximum for the residents that live in these two-bedroom homes, unlike a household that, like I came from, that you have six kids and there's six cars in the driveway. It looks like you're selling cars in a used parking lot. So, and also, these people that are retirees or they're young professionals, they have less trips. They don't have the kids that they have to take to soccer practice. They don't have jobs that they're leaving in and out for for errands. They're either to and from once a day, just like that. And these equations and these studies do take into account those, and they record the best they can of the people living them as well as the quantity of number of cars leaving the site.
So this project is anticipating that this is basically going to be retiree community in townhomes?
Not necessarily. But that was the explanation from ITE on how they base these numbers and how they adjust their formulas based on the studies that they do physically.
And so that's kind of what I was getting at, is if it ends up being predominantly retirees, let's say, then I think you do expect a lot less trips. If it ends up being a lot of younger professionals or younger families, then I think what you see is more trips. And in our particular area, like with the growth of, like, the colleges in our area, you know, with Riddle and Daytona State and the Thun Cookman and Palmer College and the like, you see a lot of attraction to the townhomes. I mean, they're nice, but they also means that that's, you know, that's a demographic that's, they're active, they're coming and going all the time, you know, and friends are coming and going and things like that. And so that's just a concern that I see, and that's one of the things that is tough to gauge in those formulas and those studies, because you don't know really until it's built and you see what's there, right? So, I don't know, just something that I think about, so.
What other questions do we have while he's up here?
Nothing for the gentleman, but I'll have one for Penelope.
Okay. Do you have anything for him?
No, I don't. Thank you.
You said for Penny?
Yes.
Okay. She sat close, fortunately. Were you making sure that you would get, you get all the mileage we can possibly get out of your legs?
I forgot my pedometer.
You should have brought it. Go ahead, Chase.
We annexed this in two thousand eighteen with the understanding of what is going to be happening.
Yes.
Suppose you go back and there is no annexation, if, or, you know, let's say the applicant decides to go back to the county, what can be developed there under the county codes? So currently, right now, under the county's code, which they're free to re-annex back in there, they can...
Well, they can't without our approval. Once we annex the property...
They don't have to de-annex.
Once they annex into the city, they have to get our approval. We have to go through the, an ordinance process to de-annex them, so they can't just leave once we got them.
But that's the current zoning, whether we...
Yeah, so, but the Florida statute does require that when you annex property, that you apply your jurisdiction's land use and zoning onto the property to have jurisdiction over the property. So until we apply our land use and zoning, we really don't have jurisdiction over the property.
So we can't remain silent, is what she's saying. We can't remain silent.
Right, so what, then what is the current zoning then under the...
So the current land use on the property, they're, what they're entitled to is four units per acre, and they're requesting tonight six units per acre.
Go ahead.
My question, Penny, is we talked about how developers, at the point of coming up with a firm plan, if you do a traffic impact study, and they may have to pay into a fair share agreement if it's determined that there will be an impact in their development, and it relates to where their development is. My question is, what is the radius of the impact?
Two miles is where they do their analysis.
Okay, and so from Crane Lakes, two miles is how far along Dunlott?
But they're also, so, I'm sorry, let me clarify that answer. It's two miles plus any additional segments or intersections that the city would like to also add to the analysis. So we are allowed to add other areas that we know have traffic concerns beyond that two-mile radius.
And how many times have we done that as a city?
Many times recently. That's how, yeah. I mean, we've found even...
Because we know the people that live at Crane Lakes come to city center. They're here tonight. We know, hopefully, they go to Riverwalk, Jimmy Hula's Down Under. So that's a lot farther than two percent. Okay, so then my next question...
So, for example...
Also clarify that we, we're responsible to mitigate the impact. So if we can get somebody else off of Dunlott in some other way that allows these people to travel, that's part of the solution. So it doesn't have to be where these people necessarily put the wheels on the road. It's to get other people off the road to give room for these folks, which Yorktown Extension is one of the things we've used in the past, right? Fair share to get everybody off of Dunlott and going north before the interchange to allow things to happen at the interchange.
Yes, so for example, to speak to that, some of the recent developments that just went through that fair share that you all recent saw, like, towards the end of last year, fair share agreements for projects, kind of way towards the south end of Williamson, did have to analyze projects to the north end of our city and pay into the Yorktown project, even though that's beyond the two-mile radius. even though that's beyond the two-mile radius.
Right, I'm thinking more further east to the river. And then I was interested in your comment that you also, in terms of fair share payments, will add in an overage. And I understood it to be 200%?
Correct.
Okay. And my question is, and you said sometimes we've collected that and we've had to return it because we haven't had really a project where we haven't...
No, so for, when a project is done, it has been built, we have analyzed all our final bills and it's being closed out. If we collected more money than was necessary to complete the improvement from specific developments, then they get, if they paid more than what was required, say that 200%, we didn't need the full 200%, the costs were more like 150 or something like that, then they each get, you know, that, that proportionate refund. But that's not done until a project is fully built and closed out.
Well, I, I understand that. Okay, that helps. But I guess where I'm going, and this is one of my concerns, that it sounds good that developers pay into what will impact very close to their developments and the fact that future developments. But at some point, how long are we looking out? Because one of the reasons we're in the quandary or the quagmire, that's probably a better description, where we are right now with all of our roads in Port Orange is because we've applied this reasoning, well, it fits current traffic. And if there's something in the future, they'll pay at that point. And that, it really, I think, has just kicked this can down the road or been a siren song for us to approve things. And we're seeing the impact on Dunlaughton, Clyde Morris, Madlin. So I guess I'm just, as planners, I've got a question there. As planners, do you take this big picture? It sounds to me like you're taking this sort of small picture around where that development is without thinking about the entire city impact.
So the analysis, you do a short-term and a long-term analysis. That long-term analysis is a 20-plus-year analysis. And so you have to look at the impacts in the short term and what improvements are necessary to address current problems or issues. And then you also have to look at what is the traffic going to be and the capacities available that, in the long-term, 20-year analysis. So for example, there may not be an issue today, but the analysis can show that there will be an issue in the long-term analysis. And so you have to plan for the long-term analysis. And I'm, I'm not sure if you recall the, the presentation that Tim Berman gave that showed kind of all the tran- global transportation improvements that the city is planning for, for build-out. So those are to address build-out of the city. And so we look at those future improvements with all these analyses and ways that we can set up those projects now to get people to start paying into them so that we can get those built for the build-out, for that long-term impact.
But don't we see, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
But don't we see, we already, already have a problem?
Yes, in this case, I'm just saying as an example, there are, there have been other situations in the past where the current short-term view doesn't show a problem, but in the long-term it does. And they have to have a solution for the long-term, even if there's not a problem today. In this case, in this case, there's a problem today, and so they have to mitigate for that as well.
What I'm struggling with is if in fact it's a 20-year timeframe, you know, they look at now and then long-term 20 years and, and the rates we've collected, the fair share from developers, have been sufficient for all of that, then why the heck don't we have the money we need for roads today? I guess I'm just wondering, is there an error in the formulas? And if there is, that gives me pause about some of the...
They don't, they don't pay for the total impact. And, and I would say that when it comes to fair share, I, I take Yorktown Extension because I, I micromanage that because I really want to see it completed, is, is that the people that are paying into that, the developers are paying into that, they have more financial equity in Yorktown Extension right now than the city does, than any other government entity does. A lot of times, the, the segment issues we have are, are because the government doesn't have the money to move forward. And, and we have money sitting, fair share money, sitting waiting for Yorktown Extension to be done. We're just waiting for Tim and I to keep saving our quarters to build it. The other thing that I, that I know Council and Councilmember Ford's not going to like hearing this, but, but scientifically in analysis, and I know how much we love analysis, this city is not in a quagmire, a scientific quagmire. It's in a, a perceived quagmire because it stinks on Dunlaughton. But Atlanta now might be in a quagmire. But we're in a position right now where things are worse than they used to be. But they're not overcapacity with this, with the exception of few segments. Now, the other thing is Williamson had a segment that I believe two years ago was overcapacity. And we were ringing the bell and talking to our county council. Right now it's below, below capacity and we can't ring the bell as hard as we used to. We thought it was going up and it went down. If you really want to think about the future, we might not need roads in 30 years. We'll see. So those, those are all unknowns that we, that we try to, we try to anticipate. But some of them, some of them we really can't, we can't tell.
Sounds like Jake wants you back to the future this weekend.
I guess to try to, to try to answer your question a little bit fuller as well is, for example, in the past, when they were, you know, say 20 years ago or so, when they were looking at a development, you know, the Yorktown project as it exists today came out of thinking of a long-term solution to a proposed development 20 years ago. And so now we're at the point where that 20-year planning is an actual solution that we're being able to be able to implement hopefully soon. So part of that analysis too is that, you know, we have certain, we have that, that long-term map of improvements that Mr. Berman presented to you all. And eventually all those are going to be fair share projects that people are able to pay into or construct in entirety if their project, for example, out in the west side, we have people constructing entire segments of road as part of their improvement. Sometimes what comes out of these transportation analysis is another solution for the long-term is presented as part of the analysis. Whether it be additional signal timing or a new intersection improvement is identified to help solve the long-term problem that might exist 20 years from now. A lot of the projects that we have right now that we're able to pay into came out of transportation analyses years ago as long-term solutions. And we're in the long, we're in that long-term now building them. So that's where some of that long-term analysis. So we've got the current pots for projects that we already have either fully designed or in the process of designing that we're getting people to pay into to build. And then we have the future road network that will be created as a fair share project. And then some of these TAs that are coming in are now identifying other long-term projects. I'm not sure if that helps.
Yeah, no, tha- that was a nice explanation.
Let me just follow up one more time because the reason I keep wanting to hit, hit the drums is because I, I came in here, I'll be honest, very, I can go either way. You know, I can see the validity of both sides. I want to approve it. At the same time, I'm, I'm hung up on this. And I know it's one little segment between Crane Lakes and Summer Trees. That's a pretty important segment. So the, the question I have, if it's already overcapacity now, what are we doing to address that? Forget about any future development. What are we doing to address that? Wouldn't it make sense to fix that before you consider at putting anything else on there at all?
We're, we're working with the county to get that widening done. So we're collecting, we can't get that right away until we have a willing seller to give us the right of way to build the wide, to widen the road. As part of these development approvals, we're able to get that right of way to widen the road as well as get them to pay into the cost of widening it. As well as we get to, they would also pay into any intersection improvements that would be needed at the actual intersection of Taylor and Summer Trees, Taylor and some, Taylor and Crane Lakes, as well as the other reliever facilities.
So it's the county's responsibility to do it, right?
Yeah, and ultimately the county is going to have to issue a, a concurrency certificate based on their satisfaction of the mitigation. So we can't, we can't just approve this on our own. The county's going to be at this table.
See, tha- that's where I, you know...
I mean, we're, we're there. We are reviewing and ultimately approving the concurrency.
I'm struggling with it because I, I just, it, it seems to me that, you know, in order to, in order to fix your broken arm, I need to break it a little bit more for you and then, and then address it. So that's kind of what it feels like, you know, that, hey, let's add some more so we can have those people pay for it when reality, county should just address it now. That's just my thoughts.
Any other questions for Penny? I had one, I had one more for Colleen before we go to the public. Oh, I was approached with, raise that microphone up because Penny just, there you go.
I forget, sorry.
I was, one of the concerns that I wanted you to address that there was a rumor out there that this was going to be low-income housing. I wanted you to have an opportunity to address that.
No, sir. These are housing that's affordable as opposed to being, being called affordable housing. It's not classified as what would be construed as Section 8 or governmental subsidized housing in any way.
Right.
They should be similar in pricing to the other townhomes you have or perhaps a little bit lower. I might get yelled at for that later. No, this is not that type of housing. All the maintenance will be handled by the association. There's not going to be neglect.
All right. Any other questions for her before, go ahead.
Yeah, would the, you know, and I appreciate the opportunity that we spent together and the conversations this afternoon. Would the, I, I wonder, and I guess you can't really speak for them, but I, I'm wondering if a compromise, you know, if it's currently zoned in the, through the county to have four developments, I'm, I'm a little bit more willing to, to play ball and compromise with that because I want it developed in Port Orange because at least as opposed to, you know, just being stuck with a messy table at the end, we can have a seat at the table during the development aspect. But it's real difficult for me to wrap my, my head around adding increased density. Regardless of what the reports are saying, every time we've been faced up here with, with decisions like these, which are really the lesser of two evils, the only way I've been able to justify those decisions have been because it's always reduced density. This would be the opposite of that.
You might want to look at it from this perspective, and I don't, I don't know if this helps you at all. If we went today with the current zoning at four units an acre, the gross density, the gross achievable build-out would be 57 single-family homes. That's with driveways, backyards, patios, swimming pools, yard landscaping, irrigation, things that are going to impact negatively, not only on the environment, but the aquifer, the traffic, impervious surface, the tree preservation, et cetera, is threefold what you're going to get, more than threefold. I'm doing bad math here, than what you get with single-family homes. So we could build today at that. But we don't want to do that because that's not smart growth or good planning. Good planning would be a more clustered type of development that would provide for perimeter bear, you know, open space and preserving the preserve, which sounds a little strange when you say that. I, I don't know that lessening the number of units in the townhomes is going to be of a benefit to the city when that's, I mean, the income you're getting from revenue would, one would assume would be beneficial.
I mean, I could see that, but, and again, at what cost?
I think were submitted today, I'm not sure, in favor. And I think that some people are here to speak to it. Is, what can I say?
Council and Councilmember Trey Mount, one of, one of the things that I want to remind you, pro or con, is whether they do the four units or six units, that segment is still going to be a problem and still need to be addressed, right? So, so by going, give us four, it doesn't make that matter go away. It's still going to have to be addressed probably the same way with the, probably the same amount of impact. If not, a, a little bit more if you, if you send it to them with, with, with the, with the four units. So, so it doesn't make that, the density is more people on the property, but the density out in town, the impact to us, the things we care about, the traffic and the, and Councilman Stilton brought up, they're unknown because those people don't live there yet. We don't know who's going to live there and how that's going to impact us. But the science tells us, from, from the traffic engineers, that, that, that traffic's going to be impacted either way. And science says somewhat less with more people on the property. I don't know about who's going to make more money, whatever they do, but, but either way, it's going to impact the city. Either way, it's going to impact that, that, that signal out on Taylor. And either way, they're going to have to write a check to, to do something on Taylor. And either way, Taylor's not going to be expanded next month because they did it. It's still going to take time.
Another way to kind of look at it, and I don't know if it helps either, is the school contingency, Volusia County Schools, County School Districts. Their determination, and we have their certificate should this get approved, is 11 students.
It's in the package.
Eleven out of 84.
Well, and that's where, that's where I struggle immensely because, you know, and Jake and I talked about that exactly. At some point, something's going to go there. What's the best-case scenario?
Why don't we hear from the public, and it's going to come back to us for debate and discussion anyway? So with that in mind, I'm sure that there might be maybe one or two people or more that want to speak to the item. Just want to let you know, everybody gets three minutes. When you come on up, introduce yourself, tell us where you live, be mindful of the clock. And if, for the sake of productivity, whoever's next, if you want to be in the on-deck circle, we keep things moving.
Good evening, Mayor Burnett and Councilmembers. I am Margaret Smith. I live at Crane Lakes. I am a member of the Homeowners Association Board and I'm representing the board and the HOA members. And I wanted to tell you that we are very concerned about increased density because of the intersection that is across from Crane Lakes that will be used. And as I was listening to the number of trips, I was puzzled because I can tell you that with 804 residents at Crane Lakes and most people being retired and all seniors, that the traffic is voluminous, you know, going in and out. So I can't imagine that the explanation for who may occupy the, the residence would, would be correct. I, I think that's off. And then another major concern, and it's been addressed by all of you, I appreciate that, is that when will the road be improved? When will the intersection be improved, the project will be done first. And it's already a nightmare, to put it simply, at that intersection during the day and of course the impact on Dunlaughton. And then the other thing I just wanted to reference quickly is, I'm sorry, but I wasn't aware of any meeting or neighborhood meeting. I haven't spoken to anyone, but there's 804 residents, so maybe there were some that were contacted by the developer. But we certainly weren't as an association, you know, representing Crane Lakes. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Joe Peterson. I also live at Crane Lakes. I am currently the president of the HOA. I've been on the HOA board the last four years. There has been no contact to have a meeting. We would have loved to have had it. Couple of things that I'm concerned with that Peg has not mentioned. In and out of that area, it's tough. And I don't know when these surveys are done, the traffic surveys. But when there's something going on in town at the track or at the beaches or something like that, that road is the only road to go west on. And it's impossible to get in and out of there, even with the light. And if you happen to be coming east on that road wanting to turn into Crane Lakes, you better pack your lunch. Also, we've got to remember, we've got eight more units coming into Crane Lakes in the very near future. It's all in the process now. So we're going to have more people there and more retirees making more than the one trip a day. When I worked, I went left in the morning and came home at night. Now I'm eating out. I bet I go six, seven times some day. So I don't know where these surveys are coming from or theories that they have. What's going to happen when they expand the road too? What are they going to do to our community? That's a concern for all of us that live there. Well, it's a pretty nice place. It's pretty close to heaven. And we're all getting closer to heaven every day. I guess we've gone over the... And I, I guess we've gone over the sales values.
I'm hoping it's that direction.
Yeah, I'm hoping it's that nice. What are the sales values? Can we get a dollar number?
This, this is not to determine that right now, just to make sure, folks. This is just zoning.
Thank you. And then the road, the side road, I think it's Fern Road or something like that, is that going to be accessible from this new subdivision? And that be used as a in-out road at all? Or is that definitely going to be abandoned? Is that going to show? Is it something that'll come up in the zoning or anything like that? Or is it just, no, it's?
You have to wait for the site plans to...
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Jill Musson-Williams. I'm a resident at seventeen-ninety-five Taylor Road, also own a business there at seventeen-ninety-five Taylor Road. I appeared before the Port Orange Planning Commission in November when this issue was addressed, and I brought up a couple of my concerns. I am the only annexed neighbor that is currently residential adjacent to the conservancy and also to the property. I am a real live, every day dealing with the issues of what is truly, and we have to recognize, this area is, the annexed properties are islands amongst Volusia County properties. It is a particularly different and unique situation that I know that the planning department and staff have taken into consideration, but it certainly has direct bearing on those of us that live there. I know that my main concern is for, not only for my business and my property, but also for the adjacent nature conservancy. This is an issue that has long been left unaddressed by both the city and the current owner, and I know that this is not the time and place, but I do think it has direct bearing on your consideration of the issue before you. Like the traffic issues that, you know, it's difficult to foresee, we also don't foresee the environmental impact on an area that has no custodial oversight, no management as detailed in which I hope the packets that I delivered earlier this week that you received. This is a big issue. It's one I know that a lot of you folks, both past and present, who have held positions here with the city have advocated for, but it is paramount to consider the fact that this is a city property. My properties are annexed into the city of Port Orange. The conservancy is a city property. It is not currently and has gone for the past nineteen years without proper management and maintenance from an environmental standpoint. And if you did have time to review the environmental conservation easement that was set forth and signed into a document with the city as well as the Museum of Arts and Sciences' current owner, you will see that we are sorely behind in this management plan. Increasing density and adding homes and so forth, at least without in tangent addressing these unresolved issues and management problems, is not a way to further ensure the potential liability risk that continues every day.
Thanks, Jill.
All right. I will speak, I, I hope we have the opportunity to speak more at length about this, but please, please keep this in mind as you consider the zoning issues.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Debra McCarnes. I'm a Crane Lakes resident, and I know that the residents of Crane Lakes have been very uneasy about what's about to happen and what's been going on. I think Mayor Burnett did a great job in November when he came and, and addressed the issue of change because a lot of older people do have issues with change. We all do sometimes. But that got, got the ball rolling and they started, I could hear, you know, conversations with them about accepting the fact that something was going to go in there. However, I was told again tonight by Colleen that she reached out to us many times and we never got any kind of information. We, we did not have a meeting. I don't know who she meant with, but it wasn't any of us. I've only lived in Crane Lakes for eleven months. Most of these people here I don't even know, and I first met tonight. So I know that because I reached out and I started the ripple effect, a lot of people were so concerned that they came out on a really cold night. Now, when you look at the impact of the traffic, I can tell you as one of the younger people in Crane Lakes, there's a lot of people in their fifties and sixties who work out of their homes, and I'm one of them. I go in and out of Crane Lakes three to four times a day, either to meet with clients at their homes or at a studio that I have off of Bevel Road. So I may be single and I have one car, but there's cars that come to my home too. I've had two clients that came today to my home. So there's a lot of increased traffic that you're not aware of. And as far as the other residents I know there that also work from home, those are the same similar situations. So when we're looking at retirement communities, I don't know many retired people in Crane Lakes that sit home and do nothing or leave the house once a day. They're a very active group. So my concern is with that traffic. I have to add on an extra five minutes if I'm going east on Taylor Road to Dunlauton because that summer trees light will trip me up every time. And I, if somebody could show me a way out of there so I don't, I'm not late to some of my appointments, I would love it. But it is, it is a lot of congestion, and I'm glad to hear that you guys are addressing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Good evening. My name is Suzette Cameron. I'm a nineteen-seventy-seven resident of Port Orange and very proud to have raised my family here. I live out in this corridor in Forest Lake Preserve. If I understood when Penelope was up here, the city, they recommended approval, correct? For the project? Is that what I heard you say? Okay. I'm in favor of the project. I think it's a great opportunity to bring other types of housing out into our sector of the community, and I thank you for listening to the developers and to your experts that you have on staff.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Lee, and I am a resident of Crane Lakes. I will say that sometimes traffic can be crazy there. I will also say that once a light was put up, it made it flow that much more. I understand as someone said, you need to pack a lunch if you are coming east and want to turn into Crane Lakes. I would like to think that those who have control over our traffic flow would be smart enough to put that turn signal into an active turn signal and not just a blinking light if this is, and when this is approved. As one of you stated earlier, you know something's going to go into that property. I'd rather see something good as a community even to increase the traffic flow. And yes, it can be frustrating, especially at the summer trees light. However, I will also say that I would much rather have a community, a good community there, not some low-end, but a fine community there as opposed to what other stuff could actually go there. I am in favor of the project.
Thank you, Linda. Good to see you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Duhovny with Volk Law Offices, and I represent Bryce and Lori Faust, who are here in attendance. And we had sent in a letter. Have, have the council members had an opportunity to review that? Okay, so obviously in three minutes, it's impossible to be able to deal with everything that's there, but we would want the council to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission who voted unanimously, not voted, but recommended unanimously against this project. And the, I, I've set out the bright, the Faust concerns in a numbered list, but primarily the, I'm going to start off with the more general and then get to the more specific, the way it involves their property. But the density issue is of extreme concern to them, and we've only been talking about the maximum in that range. The, the Volusia County low-intensity zoning that applied to that property is a range. It is from zero-point-two to four acres. And the, so the, the four is just the max, but zero-point-two, that's only one unit for every five acres. And that's really what's there. That's what's there along Fern Park Drive, not four units per acre. Okay, so when, when the council is taking this into account, whether this should be approved, that's, you have to look at the, what's currently out there. And so this would be a very dramatic increase, not just, not just a, an increase from fifty percent, but in terms of what's out there right now, it is many-fold would be the increase. The Faust property and the subject property are, they abut the Gamble Place Spruce Creek Preserve, and under the comprehensive plan, you're supposed to have some type of a transition in terms of zoning, and instead you're going to have that preserve, and then all of a sudden, eighty-four residential units? That, that's not a transition. There's a lot of inconsistency with the comprehensive plan and with the future land use map. Not enough time today to be able to go over all those, but I've listed those out. You have the actual language that's in there, and this is not, this would not be compatible. And just because there's an amendment process, it doesn't mean that, that the council has to, has to allow for it. The burden is on the applicant, and they have not demonstrated that there would be compatibility or a good transition. The easement that was referred to is a, an easement in favor of the Fausts, and so they're very concerned about the impacts that it would have on that easement and also with regard to privacy and with regard to flooding. There's going to be buildings that are going to be built along the eastern side. That's going to be elevated, and there will be, there will end up being water that'll drain over, and it'll be onto the Faust property. And they operate a horse farm as well, and that would be very catastrophic to that.
Thank you. Thank you. Keeping you busy tonight, huh?
Yes, I'm sorry. Hope I didn't speak to you.
Double duty?
Thank you.
Hey, Tom.
Howdy. Uh, Tom Silk, Crane Lakes. Quick question. On Taylor Road, just west of the Spruce Creek entrance, is there another project going in there for housing?
What area again, Tom? Take it?
Uh, Spruce Creek, just to the west of the entrance. There's a road going in. Is there another development going in there?
You're talking about adjacent to the fly-in?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
There is, so...
And not a city, not a city project.
It's a housing project.
It's a county project, right?
Housing? I mean, is that coming to play with what's going on with the density? Five years ago, when I championed the light outside of Crane Lakes, running back and forth between here and county meetings, back then, they were talking ten to fifteen years to widen our road. Now you're still talking ten to thirteen years. I think it's crazy to put another car on the road there until there is funds. Growth is good. Smart growth is better. Also, to Colleen, I don't know what your delivery method was. Any number of people could have received it. You held a meeting, nobody from Crane Lakes was there. Didn't you recognize it was a problem? Contact us? Maybe do another meeting? We would have appreciated it, but you're kind of shutting us out. You're kind of shutting us out. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Come on up, Brian.
I didn't say this before. Brian Spees, four-twelve Nash Lane. Sorry about that. Kind of glad I came tonight.
We are too.
I agree with the council and the mayor's thoughts on this project with the density. I mean, and especially, Tasha hit it right on the head. Why add to an existing problem? Let's not put the cart before the horse. Let's get that road widened before we put anything else in there. And Mr. Johansson, I'm sorry, but I, I do disagree with a lot of things you said about it. Speaking specifically about Atlanta, I came from a widely dense area up in the northeast in New Jersey. I know traffic, and we're getting real close on Dunlauton to being like that. Let's not turn it into that, and let's think ahead and get those roads widened first.
Thanks, Brian. And ma'am, who are you?
Gabby Connors, six-oh-two-three here in Pond Drive, also President of the Port Orange South Daytona Chamber. This project did become before Economic Development Committee, and while the chamber doesn't take a position on single projects, we did look at this. I've worked for many, many years with the planning staff. I remember when Crane Lakes came in as a plan to the city, and I'm just so proud as, as the chamber president that people want to move to Port Orange, and this is a great city, and people do want to move here. And this housing option, I think, is a great option for our city. I think the townhouses definitely will have a less impact on the environment than the single-family homes in that location. I think it deserves moving forward to let them come up with the site plan and let us see actually what, you have many opportunities ahead to shut the project down, but I think moving it forward at this point is probably a good idea, and I think that this plan looks very, very good for the city, so, from what I can see. So I encourage you to move forward on it.
Thank you.
Good evening, members, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Kevin White. I'm here to speak on behalf of my family. We are the property owners immediately to the north of the proposed project. We own the full length of Fern Park Drive, and in fact, we own Fern Park Drive itself. Over the years, Fern Park Drive has been a mess and a mix-up of easements down through there, and my family has borne the entire expense of maintaining that road over the years. It's not maintained by the city, the county. We have borne that cost. Four years ago, my family was approached by the county engineering department in regards to widening Taylor Road, and we were told at that time that it was in the five-year plan, and in fact, they were going to have raised, a raised median separating the westbound lane from the eastbound lane on Taylor Road. I now hear county staff is saying that's in the ten-to-fifteen-year range, so apparently that project has been pushed back by the county. When we were approached by the developer a year, year and a half ago, we were told that there were going to be luxury townhouses somewhere in the two-hundred-and-forty, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range. I suspect because of the changes in density that they maybe scaled that back, and I've heard that there may even be rental units in there. So we have some concerns about that. In addition, if they're going to be accessing the property through Taylor Road, then because we own Fern Park Drive, we would want the developer to consider vacating those easements along Fern Park Drive. And in fact, we would request a privacy wall down the length of Fern Park Drive because we're not wanting anybody, any of those homes that are butting up to our property, we don't want them using those roads to maintain their individual yards and property. Conceptually, I think, I speak on behalf of my family, conceptually, we agree with the project provided that it's going to remain luxury townhomes and that, you know, our interests are protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Todd Seeger. I'm also a Crane Lakes resident. I waited until towards the end here just because I, I wanted to see if anybody was going to bring this up. If there's ever an accident over on I-4, we're the main road to get back around that entire area. So first thing that the Highway Patrol does is shoots everybody right down onto our road and then back through the access, getting back through there. So we're not even considering that. Nobody also brought up the fact through any of these studies, and I don't know when the studies were done, nobody brought up when they were done, and nobody asked when they were done. But we are not taking into consideration the impact from servicing people like contractors, painters, cable people. I, I mean, the impact into our area just in Crane Lakes alone is heavy on a daily basis. The road use out there is unbelievable. We're also one of the main accesses to get to the dump. Okay? We get trailers coming down that road, guys in trucks talking on their cellphones, not paying attention. This is a heavily congested area now at this point. I want you guys to strongly consider what you're doing until all of these impact studies can be done and a traffic study as a minimum. Lay some cords across the road. Count those cars, because I... Count those cars, because I can guarantee you, it's a lot heavier than you think it is, and we really need to push the county. We have the ability to talk to the county. You guys can talk to the county. Let's move these projects along. Everybody wants to see the city of Port Orange grow, but let's move it along properly. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Last chance, anybody else? Come on.
Mr. Mayor and council staff, Frank Ladulce, I'm a resident of Crane Lakes, and I just wanted to say that I want to reinforce what we've heard from a number of people from Crane Lakes. This last one from Mr. Seeger was very, I think, right on, and I'll add to that. I've been in Crane Lakes now for two and a half years, and each year, I must tell you and everyone, it's gotten terrible, almost to the point where we're talking about the New Jersey gentleman who happened to say, you know, roads are getting tough. And I think the area, you know, with all of its areas, has, has built up quite, quite well, so as a number of people have said, we would appreciate if you're looking more into the, the study, but we'd be probably against the overall project here. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thanks, Frank.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and council members. My name's Bryce Faust, and my wife, Laurie Faust. We are the property owners directly to the south, borderline by the conservancy and parallel with the adjacent property. We've been property owners there for over thirty-five years. We knew all the people that owned that entire property, Marvin Panch, the Dominic Coppolinos, all the people that owned Dee Vanderhook. The people that owned those properties have all passed away. Those properties were, were sold to others. We've been, we've been neighbors and, and have had a relationship with the Whites for over twenty-five years, with their father, he was a great man, as well. So we know something's going to go in there, and we're not opposed to it. However, the property owner has told us, has been inconsistent in all her explanations to us for years, and had lied to us, basically, about what she was putting in there, and they have now, they went for eight, a density of eight. Now they've reduced to six. And I have an attorney, he couldn't say everything that, that obviously he's been engaged to do in three minutes, so I felt compelled to say that my property, all three hundred thirty feet borders that, that property, I'm going to have townhouses looking down on my property. We have a quite little, quiet little world competition horse arrangement that we've been working on for the last thirty years, my wife does, and I'm a road builder. I'm a highway bridge road builder, and I can tell you that when it comes to highway bridges or any roads, hope is not a plan. So if you're hoping that things are going to change, or hoping things are going to get better, I have news for you. I run a $500 million project right now, putting high-speed train at Cocoa Beach, from Cocoa Beach to the International Airport. I'm the construction manager. I can tell you, hope is an unacceptable plan. So, moving away from that, my concern is our protecting what we've built for thirty-five years as Volusia County residents and residents of Port Orange. We're proud to be here, and we have built our own little piece of heaven there, and we're fine with it. However, I'm going to experience light pollution, noise pollution, all sorts of distractions to my property that are unwarranted. There was a house per five acres is what was there, and the nature conservancy, and I have, I have maintained that borderline to the nature conservancy for twenty-five, thirty years. I've mowed it, I've cleared it, I've cleaned it, I've put sprinklers there to keep it from burning, I've run off the homeless, I've done all that stuff for thirty-some-odd years there. Nobody else has helped, some of the other neighbors in there. So with that being said, we'd just like to give consideration to the light and noise pollution that we're going to experience. We're going to request a privacy wall as well. I think it's warranted for that and as well the flooding. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you and Laurie coming out.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bryce. Who else? Last call. Okay, when it comes back to council, give an opportunity... That's what I'm about to do, is give them an opportunity to respond. Thank you, sir.
I'm sure we saw...
No, absolutely. That's why we are a team up here. Come on up.
Um, I don't know if... I didn't... With this development, we were proposing to do some improvements to the signalization at Crane Lakes to help the situation currently. And we are still willing to do that. Regarding the easement and what Mr., and I don't pronounce your name right, I'm sorry, DeHovney, DeHovney? We spent quite some time, almost an hour on the phone today, going over each one of these items that he enumerated, and we discussed resolutions and responses to all of them. I tried to provide it to y'all, unfortunately, it got to you a bit late today, but at the end of the conversation, it seemed that we had reached some type of consensus that there were answers. The one main thing that they both brought up, the Faust and Mr. DeHovney, was this easement, the red easement on the eastern side, and they want a wall. We'd be more than happy to put up a wall, however, there's an easement, so the easement's going to have to be vacated in order to erect the wall. It's illegal otherwise. If they're willing to vacate the easement, and y'all should approve this project, we'll build a wall. Same thing as the easement with the Whites. We'd be more than willing to construct a wall. No one's going to be able to traverse the rear of any of these properties, because they're maintained by an overall association. Nobody's mowing their own yard, and no contractors are coming from Firm Park Drive. Firm Park Drive will not be accessed at all should this project be approved. So if they'd like a wall, we'd build the wall. However, there is an easement there that would have to be addressed, because otherwise it would be illegal. Illegal, I'm sorry. And as I said, we are more than willing, I'm sorry if you feel that I've negated you, or I'm sorry if they feel, I should address the, the council, that I've negated Crane Lakes in any way, because it was not our intention at all. That's why we're offering to do the improvements that hopefully will stave off a little bit of the traffic until such time as the widening can take place. I can answer any other questions you may have.
Scott, any other further questions?
Council, might I add for the, for the record?
Go ahead.
That, that Taylor Road is a county road, and the county's responsibility to, to widen, and we do our best to keep pressure on them for both Williamson and Taylor, from a staff standpoint.
Drew, you got anything else? Or, Drew's not here. Chase?
No questions.
Marilyn?
No.
Okay. You're going to have to talk to her offline.
You can talk to her after the meeting.
Yeah. When it comes back to us for final debate and decision. Final comments?
Yeah, when we start?
Rock and roll, man.
Start with me?
Well, we've been at, well, let's see, we did fourteen items in thirty minutes, and we've done this one item in an hour and twenty minutes. So yeah, man, rock and roll.
We don't want to rush any, we don't rush stuff like this.
No way.
Yeah, just a few, few comments, you know. I had pretty good feeling that, and I don't mean this in any negative way, Colleen, but I had a pretty good feeling there hadn't been the kind of meeting between the developer and the HOA at Crane Lakes, because my, my, while I was getting some contacts, my email wasn't on fire. And one of the things that we've seen, one of the things we've seen in the city of Port Orange, and quite honestly, it works really well, is that when there's going to be something like this, the areas that are most closely impacted, when the developers meet with the HOAs, and not everybody's going to agree, but at least you get to hear all the concerns, and, you know, and Crane Lakes is a fabulous community. It, it's a gem. It really is. I know somebody liking it to heaven. No offense, I hope heaven's a little nicer, but man, Crane Lakes is gorgeous, right? And it's a beautiful community. By the way, a couple of comments. I love the fact that people in Crane Lakes are just there to sit in their homes. I love it. I want you coming and going. We want, this city was built for that. This is an active community. We want folks to do that, and so everybody on this dais understands that. So when we look at studies and traffic count, we get it, you know, that, that's a scientific method, there's theories at play and all that stuff, but we also look at our city, we know Port Orange, and so, you know, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces to these things. Some of the frustrations we deal with on a lot of projects is when the roadways aren't ours. You know, it's a county road. It's not our road. We, we can, we can have those influences, we have those discussions, we do all the time, it's non-stop. We just saw last year in, in election period, that there was a, a, a plan put out there recognized by every city in the county that, hey, we got a lot of roadway issues in Volusia County, so let's look at a sales tax initiative, just come up with a way to fund them, because you got to pay for them. The gentleman's right. There, hope's not a plan. These are expensive projects. Well, that plan didn't pass, so those funding mechanisms aren't there, and we're still trying to figure out, how do we fund a lot of these issues countywide, whether it's, you know, Port Orange, Ormond, New Savannah, these, these issues exist everywhere, and so funding's a huge concern. My, my issue really rests with increasing density. Sometimes we, we look at projects, we look at areas of the city, and sometimes there's reasons to, to make these amendments and do that, because there's a, there's a easily recognizable and attainable positive outcome to doing that. Maybe sometimes that's changing something from commercial to residential, or residential back to commercial or what have you, and it just depends on where it's at. This is an area really that troubles me. I'm very familiar with this area. I travel this area a lot. There are other developments going on to the west. The infrastructure, the roadway, the planning, it, it is not anywhere on the, on the horizon that any of us can see. Yes, it's, it's planned, we know that, but we don't know when, and those are long times off. Probably none of us will even be up here by the time all that goes to, goes to play. So I, I, I just don't think that doing anything that increases density, and I get that there's a risk with the decision tonight. If we decide not to do this, the, the property can still be developed with current zoning. We don't know what that's going to look like, we don't know who's going to live there, and we don't know what the realities will be, and that's a little bit of the risk, but that's a risk that, in this particular area, at this particular time, that I'm willing to take and not approve the, the request to make these zoning changes right now.
Chase?
Let me ask a question first, and I'll get to my comments. Jake, suppose we don't approve, what happens after this? What are the, what's the scenario that, that can happen here?
Penny, why don't you? I think you might also want the attorney to answer, to chime in on that as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Penelope Cruz, planning. So you could either table it and ask the applicant to go back to the drawing board and reduce the density, or address any other concerns you have, and come back with a different plan, but still keep the application open by tabling it. If you did not, if you flat-out deny it, it dies here tonight, and they cannot come back and apply for about a year. We have no jurisdiction over the property, so even though it's annexed into the city, we can't address code enforcement, we can't do anything out there. We have no jurisdiction until we put our, until we put a city designation onto it. So those are kind of your two options right there, is to table it and give the applicant direction as to how to revise their proposal and come back to that if they accept that, or you can, or you can deny it, or you could approve it.
Or to say yes.
But, so those are kind of your, your options that are on the table.
And, and I would not advise remaining silent and not give us jurisdiction.
Matt, you anything to add? Penny covered for you? You swallow hard. Chase, go ahead.
Ideally, and that was one of my thoughts earlier today, was I'd like to, I'd prefer to table it, so the developer would have an opportunity to actually have a meeting with the residents to have a say in what's, what's going on. Not that they, you know, they're not legally bound for a say, but I think it's, it's prudent. We encourage that. You know, it's a tough situation where I'm at right now. You know, for the record, on a personal level, I don't want anything there, but I know that's not realistic. And I've been in here since 1979, I grew up here, this is my home. You know, I know, I hate how big Port Orange has gotten. I understand the frustrations, because I'm there myself, I talk to my kids all the time. They can't believe that I used to get down Dunlaught in five minutes.
We need to quit telling people how good it is here. They all want to come.
Clyde Morris used to be that road that nobody knew about, nobody knew about. I loved taking that road on my little scooter when I was fifteen years old, because I knew it was the safest place to, to drive. So, but, the reality is, we're, we're continuing to grow, and with that comes a lot of growing pains. We brought this here, we annexed this here with the understanding that it's going to be developed. We did so because our codes are much more stringent than the counties. This is one of those all-too-familiar, lesser-of-two-evil selections that we're constantly faced with. And we can deny it, and as, as Councilman Stilton rightly pointed out, we can take the risk. Question is, do we want to take the risk or not?
Give up control?
Well, that's, that's my fear, is we deny it, the applicant can easily go back to the county, or however it works out, and develop something else that can be much more impacting than the current proposal. And I think I'm more interested in, I'm more interested in reducing impact than I am in reducing density. I think those are, we're all going to feel that. The difference is, we, we won't have a seat at the table. All we're going to be is left with the mess to clean up, and we're going to be powerless to clean it up, because without, the most frustrating part about leadership is having responsibility without authority, and that's a tough situation to be in. So, at the end of the day, and I, and you guys have heard my, my complaints and my challenges with it, I, I do have one final question to ask, is to the, are we permitted to add into the amendments something of the, the effect that you can't develop it until the traffic portion is resolved? Is that, are we permitted to...
You need to ask the attorney that.
To prevent that?
Okay, I was going to say, that's a staff question.
There's state law that regulates how you address traffic impacts, which is basically why our regulations are developed the way they are. We can't just say no. We have to have a process, and that's what our...
We said yes, but...
No, what I'm saying for traffic, there, that we have to give them, we, because we have a proportionate fair share ordinance, we have to allow them to use that process and pay into that fair share to mitigate their impacts. We have a process to mitigate impacts, and we have to allow them to use it. We cannot just say that you cannot develop until the road is widened, because we have a process to mitigate impacts, and that's state law.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I thought you were looking at the developer, and yeah, that was a staff question asked and answered. Continue.
Yeah, I, I think at the end of the day, and, you know, and I think Scott and I are on the same page, I think I'm just, I'm just not, I don't know if I'm willing to take the risk. I, I think I'd, I'd be inclined to support it, but I would certainly want the, the developer to communicate every step of the way with, with Crane Lakes. I don't believe, and I've gotten to know, Colleen, I don't believe that was any ill will. I think it was just for communication on, on, on all the sites, as far as reaching out and whatnot, but I'm inclined to support it, because I want to have the seat, a seat at the table as a city. I want it to be done with our quality, with our expectations, as opposed to just being stuck with whatever the county gives us. So that's my position, folks.
Marilyn?
I think you asked an interesting question, Chase, when you say you're concerned about impact more than density, because one of the things we've learned, that certain types of fewer homes or families theoretically have a less traffic impact. Therein is, I think, sort of a conundrum, because I would argue density is impact, you know, and, and there's a reason that those laws or regulations about land use have come to be. I, I, density for me is the issue. I am not comfortable increasing the density, and certainly the way the land use code goes, it actually would move from 0.2 to four, up to eight, with the caveat that we do an additional policy and cap it at six. I really think if we do that, that double passage sort of blurs the fact that eight could be the top, and just as we set policy, a later council could change it, so I really think that's a door I do not want to open. So I really think that's a door I do not want to open. Certainly, there will be a development there someday, so there will be an impact to the neighbors someday. I don't think this is the project the way I've seen it. I think there's too many questions. I had a conversation with Colleen about the type of home, what was gonna be the cost. She couldn't answer that or wouldn't answer that. I asked if she had met with the home and owners. She assured me they had and they were in favor of it. That's not what I heard tonight. That may be a communication issue, but I think it has left enough of concerns in my mind that I have to look at the report in front of me, and I watched also the planning commission. At the end of the day, I think the statement that currently it would be out of whack with traffic projections in the area, that stares me in the face. And as a policymaker, I am unwilling to say, well, you know, we can mitigate that by money or when we see the final proposal. That's telling me today there's a problem. And our surveys of citizens have said enough is enough with traffic. And so when we had the conversation about what does it mean in terms of traffic today? Are they really counting the right people? Is the methodology correct? Certainly, methodology is used by all the traffic engineers, but I don't know that it's correct. And my gut says what we've seen in our own city is there is a greater impact. So at the end of the day, I am unwilling to vote for changing the density. And I think the option to do nothing by tabling it, well attractive. I think it begs the question, and given the fact that we would not be able to address issues of code enforcement if the property was left to become, you know, unmoed or unkempt or some other things, I think that puts the city in a position that we really don't want. So I'm going to vote against this.
Just to clarify, Penny or Matt, tabling it sends them back to the drawing board to come up with another option.
Tabling, not necessarily. I mean, if we table it, all it does is the council puts it on the table, but, I mean, they don't have to amend anything with their application. They've brought it to you. It's the council's determination at this point. If tabling initiates some changes, then that can take place, but it's completely up to the council at this point.
Okay.
Mayor, also, and maybe, I don't know if this would be a community development, or if Matt can weigh in on this, but I just want to make sure we're clear on something, because I think Chase does bring up a good point. Not that it would change my position tonight, but the property has already been annexed into the city.
With the intent, with the caveat of, and this is what we plan to do?
Right, right, correct.
Right, and back in 18?
We're not losing a seat at the table. It's in the city. They can't go back to the county without our approval.
Right, we have to.
We don't lose a seat at any table from this point on. Just, I just want to be clear on that. So, it's our table now.
But it has to be zoned.
Yeah, without our zoning, it's just gonna default to the zoning that it was.
That's the prevailing zone.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, it's kind of stuck in what it was with the county until we've assigned our own zoning.
Right.
But, so explain that, because we, so sort of, we sort of do have a seat, but we don't. We have a seat because it's in the city, but we're still bound to what the county had it zoned for.
It sits in that as a placeholder until we decide, you decide, as a council, what the applicable zoning should be.
Okay. And Matt, could it be zoned agriculture?
Very well could be. The city's agricultural zoning designation.
Got it, yep.
Okay, anymore? None? On item 16, first reading of ordinance number 2019-38, call the roll.
Councilmember Ford?
No.
Councilmember Tremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Stilton?
No.
Mayor Burnett?
Uh, no. One, three. On first reading of ordinance number 2019-39.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Stilton?
No.
Mayor Burnett?
No. One, three. Both items fail. Thank you very much. Thank you, Colleen. Yeah, we're gonna, at this point, let's take a six-minute recess to satisfy Mr. Scott there. We're in recess.
And we are back. It is amazing how it goes. Sometimes you fly through fourteen items in twenty-nine minutes and the next one takes an hour and forty minutes. But with that, we are to item seventeen. We are still in the public hearing portion of the meeting. And item seventeen is first reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty dash one. And obviously, my head is still stuck on the last one because I didn't have this called up like I thought I would. Ordinance number twenty twenty dash one is an ordinance of the City of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, approving the sixteenth amendment to the countryside plan unit development master land use plan for approximately plus or minus one point seven acres located at ten ninety Dunlauton Avenue, providing for conflicting ordinances, severability, and an effective date.
Motion to approve ordinance number two zero two zero dash one.
May I have a second?
Second.
Item has been properly motioned. Seconds open on the floor for discussion. Welcome back. Haven't seen you in a while.
I'll be curious planning. As the mayor stated, the property is located at ten ninety Dunlauton Avenue. It is a multi, an existing multi-tenant building. There is one vacant tenant space, and that is primarily what is driving this proposed amendment to the PUD at this point. It's proposed sixteenth amendment to the countryside PUD. And the proposed amendment is basically to expand the category called limited specialty retail shop uses currently permitted on the property to allow the overall general retail sales and service uses as allowed by the land development code. The property is currently regulated by the countryside MDA, the original one, that was adopted in nineteen eighty-one, as well as the fifth amendment, seventh amendment, and the city's land development code. Currently, the property is permitted to have restaurants, banks, offices, and a list of very specialized retail shops. So retail is allowed on the property, but it's called specialty retail shops. And that includes uses such as bookstores, florists, jewelry stores, pet stores. But it's a defined list, and it doesn't specifically say all retail sales and services. And so that is what this proposed amendment is, is to clarify them, the intent to allow all retail sales and services on the property. So that is what the applicant is requesting, is to open that up to allow the full range of retail sales and services on the property. I do want to note that after your city council package was published and you received it, we were notified by the applicant that the proposed tenant, which was a medical marijuana dispensary, has pulled out of that proposed lease. And so there, although the staff report addressed that as a potential use, because that's, in all transparency, that's who they were looking to lease to, there is no longer an end user. So, but the owner wanted to continue to allow all, to clarify that general retail is allowed on this property, not just specialized retail. But there is no current end user proposed for this tenant space. I just wanted to make that known, and we were notified of that after the packet was published.
And just to clarify, the MDA that's in place addressed uses, this use was not a legal use when the N B, and MDA and its amendments were put into place.
The medical marijuana?
Yeah.
That's something that came into play in two thousand and seventeen.
Correct. I just wanted to clarify that, that it's not like they could have included it at the time because...
But if the, if the MDA had just said just straight retail sales and services, it would automatically be allowed because that is what is defined in our code as allowed in retail.
Gotcha.
In two thousand and seventeen, the council made a decision to, to treat medical marijuana facilities, dispensaries, similar to retail pharmacies. And so that's how we have to move forward implementation-wise.
Okay. Questions of our staffers and council?
Not anymore.
So, there's a pretty good list in the packet of what, what can be there now. I guess I'm wrestling with what are all the possibilities that could be there if we approved this versus do we, do we like the list now? Looking at the list in the packet, it's pretty good. Quite a bit of different stuff, unless I'm, am I looking at the wrong thing or...
If you're looking at exhibit two of the staff report?
Yes.
That is currently what's allowed on the property.
Okay. So childcare centers, office supplies, specialty shops with apparel art, bookstore, stationary shops, camera stores, florist, all those different kind of things? And so can you give me the same kind of examples, Penny, of what, what would we adding to that list and do we lose anything on that list?
So you would be adding basically the full range of what would be allowed under retail, which includes retail pharmacy is one, is one example.
Anything retail.
Anything retail, anything that would count as retail and conventional zoning, you know, per the land.
Anything other than, than just the retail portion?
That's the only thing that they're adding with this amendment is just to, to allow all retail, not just specialized retail.
It's, in essence, a simplification.
Mm-hmm. I mean, most other MBAs, as well as all conventional zoning, they don't get into specialized categories. It just says retail. So in this case, they're just wanting, they're want, they're asking to be able to just say retail and not limited to specialty shops.
What other questions do we have of staff? Scott, you got all your answers? Does the applicant want to speak to the question?
Good evening. My name is Tara Tedder. I'm an attorney at Lounge Drazdick, two one five North Yola Drive, Orlando, Florida, here on behalf of the applicant. I appreciate staff's presentation. Truly what this comes down to is a marketability issue for the property. I mean, it sat vacant for two years. And it's a phenomenal space on a high-traffic area that we haven't been able to lease out. And I think the obvious reason is that some of the list of uses under specialty retail really are limited in nature and quite frankly are just ones that we can't find an end user for, such as a hobby or a toy shop or a very specific just-selling jewelry shop. The option to open it up to retail sales and services, which your staff and planning commission have found to be compatible with the future land use designation, as well as the land development code, would allow for a greater range of retail sales and services that are not specifically enumerated under that exhibit B that you find attached to the staff's packet tonight. So we just wanted the option to be able to have that range of retail sales and services, which again are found to be compatible with the future land use designation and would allow for us the option to find a greater variety of end users for this infill redevelopment. Of course, one of those end users, as was disclosed, was a dispensary. That is no longer the case. But I think given the location of this property in such close proximity to an E and T office, dental offices, and a hospital, we could easily try to find specialty pharmacies or just a general retail pharmacy to fill this space, especially because of the drive-through lanes that we already have. But under the enumerated allowable uses in the PUD, we couldn't do that today. So we would like that opportunity to have some sort of tenant come in here with a more viable set of uses and given its compatibility with your land development code, as well as the overall intent of the countryside PUD. We'd appreciate your consideration of the request. I'm happy to answer any questions you have and would ask for the opportunity to respond if anyone from the public has a comment or question as well.
Okay. Questions or comments at this point? We can always come back.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I did have a staff question. See, you went and gone and hit again. Don't be doing that. The question I, and concern is, in simplifying it, does this, does this allow for the potential of an operation that would have a drive-through there?
If it was a specialty retail, you know, general retail, I'm sorry, general pharmacies would allow for a drive-through. Medical marijuana dispensaries, we are not permitting to have drive-throughs. There is no clear state law that allows that. We have two permits under review right now. We've, one actually, I guess will be withdrawn because it was that tenant. We have another one that's under review, and we have specifically told them that they have to modify the building permit to remove the drive-through because that's not clearly allowed in state law as drive-through pickup for medical dispensaries. So that use, no. A regular retail, say like a Walgreens or CVS or something like that, a pharmacy would be permitted to use the drive-through.
What about, does retail include dining?
No, that would be a restaurant.
Okay.
Which is, which is already allowed.
That's what I don't want to see is if, if we had a, a drive-through for a Walgreens, that's low intensity. If you had a drive-through for a restaurant, that's not low intensity.
Please repeat. That's already allowed.
A restaurant's already allowed on the property.
Okay.
Under the current zoning without any limits.
Would, so if we did this, would this allow a restaurant with a drive-through?
It already is allowed without this.
Okay.
We're adding on to the current.
Oh, the only use that's being simplified or clarified is the retail. All the other uses in that list and exhibit two are already allowed.
And just for future reference, as one of the questions I was going to have tonight is, is that I really wanted the, it don't, it, obviously it doesn't apply now, but in the future it will. I wanted to know who we're dealing with. You might want to let know as, as dispensaries come forward, if they come to these hearings. It, I, I want to know who the applicant is. I don't like that cloak of secrecy, if at all possible, so, so that you can prepare them for that in the future. I appreciate that.
Excuse me, Mayor. Penny, I know, I know you're speaking from memory and you're not necessarily looking at anything, but as I'm looking at exhibit two, it says restaurants in parentheses, no drive-throughs.
Oh, okay. I apologize. So, yes, so no.
Could be a restaurant.
Correct, correct. I apologize. I missed.
No, I just want to make sure.
So nice sit-down place would be okay?
Correct, yes. I apologize.
Mayor Don's Pizza House.
Any other questions for Penny? All right. Why don't we hear from the public? Anyone here to speak to this particular item? Anyone, anyone at all? Anyone at all? Come on, Brian. I know you've hung out for quite a while waiting for this one.
Ryan Spees, four twelve Nash Lane again. I'm going to start coming to more council meetings. I like the way this council thinks. I do. And Mrs. Ford, I, this is my first meeting since you've been elected, and congratulations. I had great admiration for your husband. What I would like to see in consideration of this is, I liked what I heard tonight that they pulled out, but I would like to see a consideration to not have a dispensary put in there. I've, I've talked to the mayor at length tonight, as much as I could before the meeting, and there is one already in Port Orange that apparently we don't have any problems with. But like we talked about with the development, that would add more traffic. I don't want it to turn into a, a bad element. I know we don't have problems with the current one, but, you know, we're dealing with that type of subject. There is always an opportunity for a bad element to surround that business. So if maybe we can have some consideration in the future, use to not have a dispensary in there, that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else here to speak to the item? There being none, back to us. Questions, comments, debate? Council? No further questions? No, no closing arguments in that regards? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Stotner?
No.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes, three one. That closes the public hearing portion of our meeting. In deference to a number of guests that are here tonight, I'd like to make a request of council that, there are a lot of people here in attendance that don't normally attend the council meeting and don't quite have a feel of how things work, that when we did public participation non-agenda earlier, they missed out. And if council, I would entertain a motion to reopen that item at this time.
Still moved?
Second.
Well, I think I know how this vote's going to go. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I had a, I had a feeling. I had a hunch. With that public participation, citizen participation non-agenda is reopened, and I would invite anybody at this point in time that has anything to say. You are invited up. You have three minutes. Identify yourself, where you live, and what your topic is, and we will, and you've got three minutes to, to vent to us.
Well, first of all, praise God and Lord help me. My name is Michelle James. I'm here to talk about the rat infestation going on at fifty-nine twenty-one Brandon Lane. Collectively as a neighborhood, we have spoke with Donald Barnett and Chase Tremont and Matthew Jones and also Scott Allman. First of all, was our first point, code enforcement. We're doing all we can to take care of the problem. We're trying to be as proactive as we can. It started around approximately tenth. We as a neighborhood doing all what we can, but it's just not enough. It's not enough. I've reached out to the owner immediately with no response. I said, hey, let's all work together as a team. It wasn't, he didn't want to help. So we went through with the motions. We're doing all we can. We need your help. We, we have exhausted our resources. We're still continuing to use them. We'll be here to help you with any information you might need in order to get things moving for us. But it, we need the next step. I don't know what the next step is. You know, we have spoke with Donald Barnett, and we thought we were moving towards the next step when we, when he reached out to the city attorney, Matthew, and I think a little things got misunderstood, but we're still here to ask for help. We, we need that next step. We need whatever can be done in order to make this owner move on things a little quicker. I just wanted to let you know, as, as far as three, four hours ago, I did meet with the pest control person that they finally had out yesterday and today, two days in a row, which they should have, and there are sixty dead rats taken off the property yesterday, sixty dead rats taken off the property today. So there's a hundred and twenty that were living within the last couple of days. So when I tell you there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds there are, they're not done. Those sixteen, sixty didn't, didn't remove it all. I would hope for an independent exterminator to oversee what that exterminator's doing, seeing that it took them just till the last two days to get moving on this. It would really benefit us so all of us neighbors can know what's going on in our houses based on what's going on in their house and how to move forward with trying to stop the spreading. I have people constantly at my door from all over, three, four neighborhoods over, telling me that it's impacting their homes, their garages, their trashcans, their houses, their cars, what's going on. And I try to be as forthcoming, hey, reach out to the city. You know, we're doing all we can. It would also, if that independent exterminator can, you know, tell us, so we had just mentioned that, hold on. I would also, when you guys are doing what you're doing, whatever it is that I don't know how to do, if you could revisit the current rat, rat infestation protocol and update it to reflect some more strict timeline and maybe better access to code enforcement officers to go in, just as they would approve an electrical project or a plumbing project, they should be able to give us, go in side the house itself and see what's going on. And also to recap, just several city officers are working on this. I just tend on keeping this relevant in order to help.
How much longer do you have?
And also I believe in the park, the church that's going down on Spruce Creek and Central Park. That'd be awesome.
Thanks, Michelle. Who else wants to speak to the item? Come on, Harvest.
Hello. My name is Harvest. Good night or good evening. I feel like I'm kind of, I feel that way at this point. I apologize. I'm also living in the nightmare on our street. It's, I mean, yes, the pest control guy has been out, but it's not stopping them. They're coming out at night. I can watch them. My kids are scared. We need help. We need more. What is happening is not enough. My kids are scared. They don't want to go to bed in their rooms. I just, I don't know where else to go. This has got to be fixed. The once a day, it's not enough. My kids, I have to literally help them out of the house, excuse me, to get in and out of the car for school, avoiding rat traps. We have the houses. We've covered all of the holes. It's just not enough. So if someone can just, there just is no protocol for this. So of course, like tonight, me and twelve of our neighbors are here because we fight our street every night. And we're breaking down. So whatever can be done to fix this problem. You know, to have my kids want to run to the house when they get home is a problem. I love our neighborhood. I love Port Orange. It's why we moved here, families, schools. We just, we need help, and whatever's happening is just not enough. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Harvest. Who else?
I'm Leonard Darling. I live two houses down from the rat house there, fifty-nine twenty-five Brandon Lane, Port Orange. So with the number of rats you've been hearing about, there's got to be some damage in that house. It's got to be some electrical damage. Probably, I heard that there is some sewer damage. There's probably black mold in the house. There's probably pee in between the walls. The house probably needs to be inspected and maybe even condemned. It's that serious. I'll tell you, if I bought the house, what I would do is I would level it. I might keep the brick because it's nice. But the rest of the house, I wouldn't rebuild it and I wouldn't resell it because it wouldn't be fair to the new owner. So the thing is, up in that attic is where those rats were living and also underneath the house. So you can't just go in the first floor and just can't go in there and just pressure spray and spray for bugs and say everything's okay. Somebody has to go up in that attic and find out what's going on up there. That, the attic, I know that Kenny and I, about a week ago, we were outside, you can hear, you could hear them like banging into the walls and stuff because it was alive up there in the attic. So I believe that there's a real problem up there. If somebody, if I was the homeowner, I'd say, go ahead, check it out. Why is he blocking it? He's got something to hide. That's what I think it is. So I, I'm just thinking. And then there are holes in the ground, like there's this one stump outside, out front with a perfect hole in it so that the rat can go down in. And who knows how many rats are underneath the foundation? Those rats have been there for a while. And the rats really are a little bit, it concerns me that the rats are so kind of like, they're almost comfortable around humans. And that's a problem. You know, you, normally you'd think they'd run when they see you, but they're not really running. You know, that's because somehow and some way, the food source has been kind of, it's almost been friendly for them. So that's a worry because right across the street is the children's park and also the dog park. And so this is a major, major problem. This is not just a few rats that have been in the house and, you know, and all that. And so anyway, we got an opportunity to get rid of the rats right now before they run around the rest of the neighborhood and, and they, you know, and they populate because they populate very fast. So we got an opportunity. If there's some way to do some kind of extinction right up there in the roof right now, that's the way to do it. Just knock it right out. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leonard. Who else? Anyone else? Come on, if you, if you want, last call.
I'm Teresa Dank Allen. I live next door to the rat house. Not to put the blame on anyone or any department or any whatever, but going forward, our roadblocks were that, you know, the code enforcement has been out there since November, not per se for the rats, but for other reasons. And the stench has been there all that time. Garbage on the front porch. I mean, just all kinds of code violations. But when we approach code enforcement, you know, hands are tied because of the legal system, and I understand that. And the homeowners, I, you know, I get it. But there should be some kind of jurisdiction. We call the health department. I spoke with her when she came out, and I said, what do you do going forward? She came out and made a, made a report. And she says, well, we give it to code enforcement. We've already spoken with, they're already aware. So we're kind of like going in circles. This isn't the last time this is going to happen. It's going to happen. I mean, this, this one was major. They told me there were over twenty nests. They told me hundreds in there. The workers told me the same thing. So I think there has to be some sort of expertise, be it whatever jurisdiction that may be, the county, the health department, the code enforce, something. No one is an expert at rat infestations. And it's sad that we have to be in Port Orange in this day and age, but it's going to happen again. And so I think going forward, any consideration for planning that, you know, some kind of intervention within the means of, of the legal system we have to work with would be very prudent because, I mean, it, it has been a nightmare. They're running across the fence to our house, and we have bait boxes all around our perimeter. Five different exterminators told me that was the correct thing to do. Most exterminators come every two or three days or eight days to check their bait boxes. We checked ours every day for almost probably nine or ten days. They're empty, completely devoured, empty. Hundreds of rats have probably fed off those. So I feel like we protecting our perimeters have probably killed off more than the hired exterminator that this owner has employed. He only put in a few bait traps, left the windows wide open for about a week and screens. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else? Anyone else? Okay.
We don't, we...
Back up.
Yeah, come on up.
Hello. Everything they said is one hundred percent true.
Yeah, introduce yourself.
Yeah, just introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Ken James. I'm the husband of my wife, Michelle James. And anyway, I, I just wanted to say that I was the first line of defense when these rats started happening. They, they started coming out about three-thirty in the morning. I was out there for two or three nights in a row, all night long, up until daylight, killing them with broken boom handles, bats. They were on my roof. They were going across my roof. They were going in my air conditioning system. They were everywhere. I was fighting them, kicking them, pushing them off the fence. You can't, you can't, you couldn't contain them. I, I don't know. I stayed out there until daylight, and it's been like that for two, three nights for me. Okay? It's real. I think there's people who are in denial, big-time denial in the city. Code, code enforcement, I don't care who it is. They're in denial. They, they will not act on this. If we don't contain it, it's going to spread through the whole... If we don't contain it, it's going to spread through the whole city. I guarantee, there's more rats than you can ever dream of in this house. And I'm very frustrated because we're getting no response from anybody out there that's doing a darn thing about it. And I'm mad, okay? And I've been mad for a long time. It's been attacking my neighbors across the other way. They stopped going on my yard and they stopped going on their yard like crazy. They were crossing their, I watched the whole thing every night, okay? And nobody's helping us. Okay, so we have to do something about this. This is bad for everybody, okay? There's going to be health problems. They're going in their cars. A woman had her belt chewed off. It's been, it's been a nightmare. And they keep, people coming from everywhere, helping us, talking to us, saying, "Oh, I got a rat in my garage. What's going on about this?" It's just nonstop. I have a woman come in my house, probably about 11 o'clock at night, coming from Ormond Beach. Okay, telling me, "Here, get this stuff called Snake Be Gone." And she came out herself and spread it around my house, thinking, "Oh, this stuff will work." I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, really? A woman all by herself comes out here and helps us?" Because she's seen it on the news. It's on Fox News. It's on Wes News. It's, I can't believe people aren't saying anything more about it, okay? We're like on a little island out there. So please, do something about this. You guys can do it, okay? Please. That's all I need to say.
Thank you. Who else? Okay. And that closes that portion of it. I do want to, Matt, help me out here, try to recap what has been happening and what we have been doing concurrently. It's kind of a carrot and stick approach. Because I also, I know that if you work with a homeowner, we, the hope is, is that you can get compliance a whole lot faster if he comes into compliance willingly versus us using the enforcement tool. We're doing both. And unfortunately, the enforcement, he has been, was cited, what, January 10th? With a notice of violation?
Notice of violation of hearing was posted, delivered on the 10th.
Okay.
And it must be corrected. I'm reading it right here. The notification below stated violations must be corrected by January 23rd, 2020. And the magistrate is scheduled for February 12th.
And that's, that's-
If he doesn't-
That's the stick.
Right.
And we are already in progress of using it as far as the carrot. Matt, I know that your office, you've spoken to him directly last week at our direction. You want to recap what he's told you.
Yeah, so we, I mean, we got involved late last week. We got kind of read in by code enforcement and so the issue had, or the notice had already gone out. We wanted to just kind of reiterate that the seriousness to the owner and that the city attorney's office was involved or is involved. So contacted, we contacted the owner. We contacted the pest control contractor who, with his experience, and it was over 20 years of experience, said this is the single worst infestation he's seen. So, you know, I think that, you know, all the statements that made tonight are completely validated and it's, you know, it's a, it's one that he's, the owner has had to up a contract to try to meet that deadline. I don't know that he'll get there by January 23rd. I know that he's not only doing, you know, extermination inside the house, which is every day. So normally, you know, general scenario, I mean, I don't know what normal infestation means, but on a typical case that he's dealt with, it would actually be a 30-day process where it's every 10 days. So he sets traps and dates. Every 10 days he goes, takes the rats out, resets, and you just see a dwindling. And you just heard from some of these residents that, I mean, this is day after day.
It's not letting up.
He's pulling all the numbers. I mean, he's pulling 60 plus and it's, I mean, that just tells you the significance of the infestation he's dealing with. We've gotten cooperation. You know, they've answered the calls. They're reporting directly to your code enforcement manager with the progress. But, you know, we're closely closing in on the time to comply and, you know, I'm not, it doesn't, it doesn't look like we're going to get there on January 23rd. So I think this will end up in front of your magistrate. And the potential there is for daily fines to run, you know, if this continues.
Well, I want, fines are not, obviously not going to be enough. And I'll be more than willing to testify to the magistrate. I've been in the neighborhood. I'll say what I've seen and what I've heard from people as well. But I would like us to be prepared to ask the magistrate what it would take for us to interdict. How, at what point can we take steps to mitigate ourselves if he's not taking sufficient steps? Because certainly, I would think that the stick, the financial fine, the potential of that is a certain amount of incentive. But incentivizing him to do the right thing, speaking to him, talking to him the way you've done it is great to a point. But if we're not getting the result that is necessary in the time span that we're talking about, I'd like to be prepared to do more.
Keep, keeping in mind, Mayor, that we don't have city extermination. What we would do is hire an exterminator, which this gentleman has already done.
Understood.
So we don't have an exterminator and as Matt will tell you, we're somewhat limited as to our ability to act on private property. There's some things we can obviously do, but there's some things we can't do.
And that's why I want to make sure we're prepared when we go before the magistrate to ask for the things we need to ask for.
So, so January 23rd is when the stick starts hitting the back of the head. But he's, the company that owns the building won't see the magistrate until February 12th. I am cautiously optimistic that a lot of progress will be made by then. But, but in the end, I concur with some of the comments made tonight that even after that, it may, it may be a house-raising scenario, but that's for the owner to decide. He's got to mitigate those rats. If every day another rat comes out of that house or out of that stump hole, he's still got a problem and he'll still get fined. And eventually, I think he'll come to the conclusion that it's uncontrollable. Keep in mind though, that the one other time I've seen this, not here in this city, even when you raise the house, the rats are still there. They, 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 they're, yeah, they're still there. They probably developed a heck of a network in and around that area. So this, this may become a-
Well, what we got to remember is that was a hoarder's house for a long time.
It was.
We took eight construction dumpsters to empty it.
So, well, and somebody said, "These rats seem friendly." That's because they were living with the hoarder for as many years as that person lived with the rats.
Mr. Jones, if I can ask, what, if I may, Mayor?
No, go ahead. Absolutely.
You know, I think some of these folks want to know, and I want to know, what legal options do we have as a city to address this now? Because, you know, look, I've got four kids. You know, I can't imagine having to barricade my house with that. God forbid, one of them gets bit by one of them. You know, I understand this is a civil issue, but, you know, we don't have time to deal with all the litigation that that's going to require of it. So is this not a public safety, an imminent threat to the family members in these houses? And is that what we pride ourselves in, is public safety? Do we have any recourse of giving immediate action? And if so, what is that action?
I mean, I think-
Legal action?
Well, and that was leading in, we're talking about the 23rd like it's a long time away. It's two days. They ain't going to make it.
The goal is to get rid of the rats.
Yes.
That, that's, worry about the legal and the people later. You got to get rid of the rats.
Exactly.
Legally, if, but if the homeowner can't get rid of the rats right away, do we have an obligation or do we have any legal authority to do that for them? That's what I'm asking.
I, so, legal obligation, go ahead. I'll tell you how we do it.
Yeah. Let me elaborate on the question. Midnight the 20th, 30th is not into compliance. We show up at the morning, the 24th and verify that. Do we have the ability to request an emergency court order from a judge to go in and mitigate?
I hate to give the, it depends, but I mean, that's, that's kind of what we, we'd have to judge it based on the facts that we know at that time. We can make the case for imminent threat, public safety, the difficulty is getting into the home. So a lot of this will have to be, and I've talked a little bit about this, but subpoenaing witnesses, getting them under oath to explain what's going on in the home.
I don't think you'll have any problem getting witnesses.
No, people who've seen inside the homes, people who've-
Like I said, I think there are some people in the neighborhood that have probably done that. Maybe they shouldn't have, but they have.
Then they've broken the law, see? So, so under oath, that's the first thing that the homeowner's lawyer's going to ask them.
Sure.
Is how did you get in this home that this gentleman isn't letting anybody in?
Well, I would have to believe at that point in time, the property owner, if he wanted to file a trespass complaint, I don't think it would be in his best interest. Now, that's his decision, but I don't think it would be in his best interest. And I don't think he can unsee that.
So the action that's been initiated is the notice of violation with the 13 days to comply. That's what's gone into, into play. That's the-
And today is day 11.
That's, it's day 11. So you have two more days until you get the reinspection. And at that time, if there's non-compliance, the notice of hearing has already gone out. The hearing is on the 12th.
I am.
So that's, that's the process that's been put in play. Could there have been a different path? It's possible. But that's the path that's been taken.
I'm looking at a way that we can accelerate that path.
So let me-
Where we could take some preparations concurrently in case-
Here's what we can do. And, and this is spending taxpayer money, so keep that in mind and I'm aware of, I'm aware of the public- I am aware of the public safety. So what the city can do is hire an exterminator. And help the current exterminator exterminate. He may look at it and go, "He's doing everything he can be doing." So he may say, "I may add one or two measures that this gentleman isn't doing." But, but we would be at the whim of a second exterminator. I wouldn't obviously hire the same one because at that point, we'd be in our opinion that he's not going. And we would have to ask the homeowner for permission to, to help to go into his house. And that's where I think he may say, "Heck, yeah, come on in. I'm sure he wants to get rid of this problem, just like everybody else does." So we can make those preparations to do that. I am not guaranteeing success. If one exterminator can't get rid of all the rats in the next two days or he hasn't done it, he's been out there for 10 or 12 days already, right? So I'm, I'm just, I'm not asking him, but I'm thinking. But, but whatever exterminator we hire is not going to be able to get 60 rats a day for a couple of days in a row. He's not going to be able to make it go away tomorrow. This is going to be probably a two or three week solution. Can we be part of that solution? You bet. And so I can ask an exterminator to go out there to see what the current exterminator's doing and whether he can add value as kind of a, a request. And if he can, we'll hire him and have him out there as soon as we can. And as soon as we have permission from the homeowner, homeowner.
Questions, thoughts? Marilyn, go ahead.
Can you also come at this in a different perspective? And I think this may be a city and a legal issue. To what extent can we do something to the surrounding property to deal with the rats that are coming on their property? And it also strikes me, the perimeter of this man's house may be an area.
I would consider, I would consider anybody that gives me permission in that area. Those rats all emanate from the same area because these folks didn't have that problem until we opened the doors, right? So my goal would be to, to get rid of all the rats in that immediate vicinity before they start traveling down the road to other subdivisions.
Right now, we don't have containment.
Cause more of a problem. Right.
Right.
We got to get containment.
But what we just heard is they have their own rat trips out. Why can't we hire an exterminator to assist them? And that also builds our case that this is a serious public health issue and emergency measures may be required. And at the point that it goes to the judge, it shouldn't just be fines. It should be a declaration of emergency management. And at that point, ask the judge-
We would bring that to the magistrate.
Ask the judge to order an independent exterminator just as they've requested.
And Matt, could we, we could ask for those, it's like mowing.
Because I don't necessarily care about the monetary fines. I care about the action to do something to address the problem immediately.
Yeah, the only reason why I care about the fines is as an incentive to get the problem solved. The fines themselves, I could care less about. I want the problem solved.
So for, Matt, for other, for other issues, when the city abates, we, we take, we fine and they pay for mowing, things of that nature. Could, we could, we could also pay for exterminating, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that's how we would attempt to get our money back for them.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say is that whenever we intervene like this, we, you know, we can recoup our costs through liens.
Right.
We just got to remember as a city council, someday when that happens and they come here looking to get us to cut those costs, we got to hold firm on that. But look, this is a, this is a great night for everybody to be here because this conversation needed to be had. And, and I don't think anybody up here is in disagreement with anything we've heard out here. I agree with the gentleman about being mad. I'd be furious. You've got every right to be mad, angry, disappointed, scared. I will tell you that I don't think anybody in the city of Port Orange doesn't know this is going on. It's been all over the news, social media. You know, I've been affiliated with the city in one shape or form for 30 years. I've never seen anything like this, ever. When I first saw this, I, the city manager will tell you, I immediately messaged him. I said, "Do every single thing we can within the authority," and that's where we have to operate unfortunately, "to do whatever we can to fix this." Then you know what I did? I got on the internet and I started looking. And I started trying to educate myself. "How do you do this at this magnitude? I have yet to find anything like this on the internet." And so, you know, the two, I got two or three rats in my house. You see that all over there. It's all over the internet. But something to this magnitude, I can't find it. I've been looking. And so all I want to say real quick is, we're not going to abandon you guys. I appreciate as a community, you guys are here tonight. I hope the good thing that comes out of this is some of you guys have made friends and you've become a better, tighter community and you look out for each other and you take care of each other. Hopefully that'll be the golden light for that. That being said, if you guys come across ideas, you guys come across suggestions, no matter how odd they may sound, send them to us so we can at least weigh those things out. Because you guys are going to have to be as big a part of this solution as we will. Because the city manager's right. This is not something we do. Fortunately, thankfully, and I hope this is not something we're having to do all the time. But we're going to, we're going to figure it out and we're going to be there. We're going to do what we can legally and we'll, and I know that the council up here, we will push the city manager and the city attorney to think outside the box.
What I'd like to do is entertain a motion to give, none of us individually can give them authority. We can certainly make it a priority, but as a body up here, we can give them extraordinary powers to take extraordinary measures. And at the end of this conversation, I'd like to entertain a motion to be able to give them the latitude to take those.
I won't need anything. I won't need anything.
I do, I do.
Matt does, yeah.
Yeah, and I need you to include in the motion to file court action, take injunctive relief. I need the full, I need the full authority.
Can you state what you-
You want to state that motion?
That's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for your authority to take legal action against the property owner in the event that it, we can establish it's a public health, safety issue. We can file suit.
So moved.
To also include authorization from city manager, unilateral jurisdiction, do whatever he needs to do, or is that separate? You don't need that?
He says he's good.
I don't need that unless it goes over $25,000.
Can I have a second? I have a second. Before we take that vote, any other comments or questions?
Just one final, I'm sorry.
No, and that's all I wanted to make sure that the residents in your community, I know not everybody's here tonight, but just encourage you guys to stay in contact with us, stay in contact with each other. Have faith that we will get this resolved. I appreciate the fact that everybody understands how unusual this is. And I wish it was something that we could say, "Well, we've dealt with that before and there's a solution." But we'll figure it out. And there's certain things that I'm proud that Port Or- And there's certain things that I'm proud that Port Orange pays the way and lays out the roadmap for other communities. This won't be one of them, but hopefully we can, we'll come up with a plan, and other communities will, will have some kind of a scenario to look at, to say, well, here's what they did, and it works, and it takes, you know, this is what it takes, but...
And we love your ideas.
You can email every single one of us on the website. Feel free to do that. We'll forward those to staff.
I'm gonna tell you this, staff, I need to give them a chance to accept the direction and formulate a plan. At some point Friday, the property's gonna be inspected, I will be out sometime Friday afternoon, like I was last week, to let you know and give you some kind of an update in person, okay? Probably later in the afternoon, I don't know exactly when, because that's gonna be dictated by my day job work schedule, but I'll, I'll come out there again. Harvest, I'll probably contact you, let you know when I'm coming. But we'll let you know what's going on, and I think that's probably the hardest part, is there are a lot of things that have been going on that you, you, you don't see, or don't know about, or haven't heard, and now we're hiking up our game. We're behind you. We're gonna work with you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and check the attic.
Did you need a second to that motion?
We have, I think there's a second.
I did get a second. Is there anything to add on, on the question?
No, just, I just appreciate the manager doing this. He said it might not, might not add anything to it, but at least we're a part of doing something to assist.
Call the question. Call the roll.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Tremont?
Yes.
Councilmember Stelter?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes, so help me, if anybody ever voted no to that. Don't applaud yet. This is gonna take weeks, but we're behind you.
Hang in there.
I'll have you over my house for, for a steak, not...
Or there's no rats.
That's it.
I will see you all on Friday. And I'll give you a chance to exit before we move on with the rest of the meeting.
Ken, good to see you, man.
Good to see you too, Chase. I was gonna say, tanning the house, that's one thought in my mind, just to let you know.
Ratsy, ratsy.
Item eighteen, city attorney.
Nothing further.
Item nineteen, city manager.
Yes, sir, I have a few items that council's asked me to update them on, on the, so, let me get there, please. Tim, can you give your TPO brief while I'm getting, lending out? One of the requests was the update on TPO, and Tim's gonna give that.
I think Councilman Stelter had brought the email. Recently, the TPO released their call for project, which we do every year on the project, so we're starting to ramp that up to get some applications in. So, the question was, kinda what's the status on the applications we've got, kinda in the process right now? Right now, we've got a total of nineteen TPO applications. Of those applications, seventeen of them have been submitted since 2017, so we've really ramped up our game in terms of applications coming in there.
Awesome.
Two of them are under construction, and that's the Dunlaughton Avenue Streetlight Project. And the one that's about ready to go under construction is the sidewalks over along Spruce Creek Road then. The rest are in some phase of feasibility study, or design, or waiting for design funds then. So we continue to work with the TPO. I'm trying to get the information needed to move those along quickly. We mentioned last week, I think it was, we're talking about, we've got a number of feasibility studies that are currently under review right now, or being drafted, that we hope to turn around to apply for design and construction funds in this March. A couple of them are kinda touch base, that we were talking about with transportation now, looking in the future. Basically, attacking the roadways at Long Clyde Morris Boulevard, there's no way to fund basically widening that road, it's just not possible, so we're trying to attack it through turn lanes. That's a way to gain capacity on the road, get the vehicles that are turning off the road, off the designated lane, to move through movement then. So, we've basically started the application process, looking at all the possible locations for turn lanes along Clyde Morris Boulevard. Same with Dunlaughton Avenue, too. Trying to increase the capacity there through the turn lanes, and signal timing then. So those are the things that we're concentrating on with those TPO applications. And we got the hopper right now.
Question on that, on the Clyde Morris widening. If you can't widen it, are you taking one lane out of traffic and making a turn, or is there able to...
The turn lanes, basically, we can, in those sense, we can acquire the right of way necessary for turn, turn lanes sometimes, or basically sometimes the narrowing of the road at that intersection to get that turn lane in there. Also, too, the widening, just the pure cost of widening a road, because of all the stormwater that goes into it, the turn lanes are, you're able to, you know, to afford those versus a whole widening operation then. So that's why we're, you know, approaching, you know, on that way then, and trying to get it ahead of the game, 'cause right now Clyde Morris is not overcapacity in terms of the, in terms of the numbers the county sets for their road then. But the intent is to get these applications through, designed, and hopefully constructed before that occurs then. And the way we are looking at the traffic generation, we feel that we're ahead of the game with Clyde Morris then. On Dunlaughton, too, the segments that we're looking at Dunlaughton are not why they, are a lot of cars on there, they're not meeting the capacity that FDOT sets on their road, which we've gotta follow. That's why we're working with DOT on a number of those turn lane projects, to try to basically gain capacity or keep traffic flow moving then. So I think in some cases there, we are trying to basically, you know, we've been looking at those traffic studies, and we've really ramped it up in terms of the TPO applications to try to gain that capacity, and also utilize other people's money to make those improvements, because basically, you know, we're using ten to fifteen percent of the city's funds on those projects then.
I have two questions. One is sort of tongue-in-cheek, I'll save that for the second one. Has anybody, the more serious one is, has anybody thought about changing the pavement markings to help drivers of, when you do have the right turn lane or the offlane? Because particularly when you're on Dunlaughton heading east, just past the interstate, people get confused about the turnoff for Taylor and off. And I almost think if, not just an arrow, if it was in a red, or a blue, or a, something so that people begin to understand, this is a, a one-way only, you know, a right only, or a left, or a straight. Has anybody, is anybody talking about that?
We've actually got a feasibility study that's being drafted right now, basically for that I-95 corridor of Taylor to Williamson. And that is basically one of the things that we wanted them to look at, is better basically, you know, signage, wayfinding signage to help out that then. So we're hopefully, from that feasibility study, comes a project that we could apply for to do something very similar to that then. All of our projects that we submit to, we indicate basically the pavement markings, we look at that, intersection improvements for pedestrian, even if the turn lane then. So, we try to encompass everything in a project to get the most bang for our buck, but we do start looking at the pavement when we do those projects, to help, you know, basically better, like you said, if you see the wayfinding, it might make it easier versus that person who's hesitant, I don't know where to go, versus making that movement then. So those are included when we look at those studies and those applications.
And then, to what extent, and I probably know the why, to what extent have we thought of double-decker roads? Like the West Side Highway in New York City, you got the lower and the upper, you know, Clyde Morris, if he can't go wider, make two layers, the trucks have to use, you know, the bottom layer, you put the light cars on the top layer, and you move traffic. Too costly? I don't know, crazy?
Very costly, but, 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 yeah, and, and kinda not tongue-in-cheek, thirty years from now, may not need them. Might, might have things above us by nature.
You have watched Back to the Future lately.
So, so a lot of people said, a rocket landing on its tail? That's never gonna happen. Here we are, so, and it's inside fifty years.
But Charlottesville did something like that in the last year or two. They, the highway was going regular, yeah, and of course, they do have hills.
They're a little bit bigger than us.
But they had one of, you know, an under-ramp and an over-ramp, so you don't have to go to New York City.
And the other item, too, was some of the projects that we're thinking about submitting for the 2020 call for project. Again, we just started that preliminary discussion on these then, so just a couple ideas. What we've had is recently, we saw the stuff that, you know, Wensker did on public work with the widening of Willow Run Road. Basically, it's a huge difference when you drive there. Some of the roads that we were thinking of basically was Herbert Street, we've got a lot of complaints on how narrow that road is, and also Madeline Avenue, the section, I think, between Clyde Morris and Nova Road. We've noticed some TPO application, other cities have submitted, allowed for the additional paving of the roadways to make them more safer to travel. So we're looking at those other cities, how they applied, to see if we can apply for our roads, something similar like that then. The other ones, too, is...
In addition, I'm sorry, in addition to that Clyde Mor, that Madeline, between Nova and Clyde Morris, is there a sidewalk on the north side in addition to that?
That's actually a project that we've already submitted for, and we've got a feasibility study for sidewalks then, on the segments of Madeline Avenue then. That has been applied for, and we're waiting for, hopefully to be selected to be moved to the design phase here, this year and the following year then. So we've already got sidewalks, this would just be the kinda widening of, similar to what was done on Willow Run there. That helps, you know, in terms of drivability, capacity, by making the roads, you know, a little bit safer there with the width then. Looking at a turn lane, basically off of Yorktown Boulevard, onto Dunlaughton Avenue, right by the Bob Evans, that backs up quite a bit. One car that's going straight backs up that traffic all the way there, so thought if we can get a right turn lane, that could help traffic flow through there. That'll be difficult due to the topography over there on that then. That's why we'll submit for a feasibility study, so they can look at the design options to give back to us then. The other ones, too, that we're looking at is just the, I think, we'll be, like I said, basically the three feasibility studies we got going on right now, we plan to submit those for design, that's the Dunlaughton turn lanes, we talked about, the Clyde Morris turn lanes, and a sidewalk project from Town West Boulevard, or, sorry, from Town Park, along Willow Run, down to, or Town Park, along Williamson, down to Willow Run, and then along Willow Run to Chardonnay Drive to complete that sidewalk missing gap segment then. And the last one is the, TPO did a study, and I know it's been talked about a few times regarding the accessible pedestrian signal systems throughout some locations within Port Orange. I believe the TPO study identified three in Port Orange. So we are looking to do kind of a bundled project, where we look for a number of areas here in Port Orange to apply for grants to put those in and install then. So those are what we've kinda got targeted right now. Five to six projects we'd be submitting in March. And typically, like every year, we'll bring those before you in March there for your approval and discussion, have a little bit more detail and background as to what we're submitting and why we're submitting then.
Tim, thanks for everything your staff does, and, and one of the reasons why I wanted to, to get this update and this report is because, like we talked about last time, we keep seeing time and time again where Port Orange is able to take advantage, because we were ready, and money is available, the OPM money, which you used to use that phrase a lot.
OPM?
Yeah, I like it, other people's money, so...
Now that we have Amanda Lasecki, we just get it. I don't talk about it, it just comes.
But, so I, I appreciate the job that your staff does, and I, and I like that mindset of, you know, hey, this particular project's gonna cost us a lot of money, it's gonna take a lot of money, we, we don't think it's gonna get there. I think a lot of cities just, we're not gonna move forward, we're not gonna even have any preparation done, where we take the other path, and, and it has benefited us time and time and time and time again. So, I just encourage the city manager, and you and your staff to continue that mindset. We'll continue to, to keep, you know, chairs at tables that matter, and, and look for opportunities for, for, to be pleasantly surprised, and be able to get all those little things. And it's, it's interesting, you know, you don't think of a turn lane, and you're like, ah, we need to, you know, twelve-lane this road, or whatever, but sometimes it's the turn lane that makes such a huge difference, you know, or, or whatever. So, those little projects make a big difference as well, so they all matter.
Well, and we joke, I gotta admit, we do joke about the other people's monies thing. It's the taxpayers' money.
It's still our money, yeah, it's still our money. It's the taxpayers' money. They're paying it to a different source. We're just making sure it comes home to us. Great point.
I appreciate the report. Something to keep in, just on the radar in the future is, is Mad, and you've already talked about it, is Madeline, you know, that's really our only, I was saying, Herbert Street, one of the only major east-west corridors that we have, even though it doesn't go all the way. But I, I notice, that's what I traveled every single day, and that's becoming a much more impacted area. It's harder to turn left on the, on the Clyde Morris. I know that's being adjusted with the meeting coming out. Very difficult to get on to Nova from there as well. Obviously, you can't get on to Ridgeland at this point, but just to keep in the mind, any opportunities we can to, you know, expand that one, widen that, if possible, great.
There's a lot of things that you can do, all we need is dollars.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Mayor, the second update was to keep you on the loop on the repairs for the sixteen-inch sub aquatine, the underwater water main repair on Halifax and Fleming. The first repair was a, did not work, didn't fix the leak, it was a twelve-inch sleeve. The line's still leaking into the river, it is pressurized, so, so it'll, it'll ease in flushing later. We, oh, we've maintained positive pressure on the pipe to keep contaminants out of the pipeline, and the Department of Health has been notified. New repair clamp's been ordered, it's gonna be delivered this week. The plan for the second attempt of repair requires the Army Corps of Engineer permit to excavate deeper and wider around the pipe. Army Corps Assuredness Permit would be issued quickly. We gave them the documentation, we should get a permit this week. The repair group, which is Logan Diving and Sullivan from Jacksonville, I think, from Jaxx, are scheduled to, are, are, we're at the site on Friday, and our schedule's start the second phase of repairs on the twenty-seventh. All the, all the dirt that, that gets, all the silt that gets removed for the excavation is gonna be put in dumpsters, I think, and brought out to, brought out to Shunt's Road. It can't be left in the water, and it can't be deposited locally. There's gonna be road closures on Fleming and Halifax, the neighbors will be notified, it's gonna be inconvenient, it's gonna be ugly for a while on the shoreline, it's gonna be messy, but we promise to clean things up at the end. The change order for the first purchase order to Logan went from fourteen thousand to thirty-nine thousand dollars. This is emergency, from fourteen to thirty, we're adding a couple thousand to it. This is an emergency purchase, we'll get it ratified at the end, but I just wanted you to know, and, in order to maintain our costs as low as practical, staff's buying a lot of the inventory, of the stuff that the company needs to fix it on our own, so we don't get the markup. Once the repairs are complete and the leak is resolved, we'll flush the line aggressively and collect two days' worth of samples. And by keeping the line out of service and keeping it pressurized, it won't cause an entire city boil water notice when we pressure, or when we get it back in notice, or back in, in service. If by chance the second repair does not resolve the leak, then we'll have to replace a large portion of the pipe, cut it, replace it. Very expensive, looking at over a hundred K, and dredging permits, Army Corps, you name it, everybody's gonna come out of the woodwork for that one. So, that's gonna take some time as well. So that's what we're looking at. We're, we're hoping this, so we had a, we had a twelve-inch sleeve, didn't work, we're hoping the thirty-six-inch sleeve pressurizes more of the, you know, it's more surface area, and it will contain the leak. The leak is a three-inch leak in the, in the pipe. So, and, and...
And considerable PSI, of course.
Yeah, and, and yes, the, the company and, and our engineers are, are looking at the pipe as best they can to determine what caused the leak, if it's just damage, or is it defective pipe, or whatever the case may be. As well as Lynn is gonna look at the twenty-four-inch, make sure that's safe, and somebody asked me about the sewer line. The sewer line is...
We talked last week about it.
I, I, correction, the sewer line is in the water, under.
Okay.
Not, not, not attached to the bridge. So, so we'll, we'll work on that, and make sure everything's good to go.
Jake, I appreciated the photos you put, and the city manager, I've, I've been showing them to several people, it's hard to imagine.
Yeah.
We're sending divers into fixed stuff, pretty incredible.
Yeah.
And we also, it's a topic for another day, but we should be prepared to talk about what we need to do to expand our redundancies in both water and sewer to our customers on the other side of the bridge.
Well, that, that's, so, yes, and all those other infrastructure things that we talked about when we, when we chatted. But that's all I have, sir.
As if that were all. Council committee reports, Arthouse.
Yes, we had a board meeting today, and I believe I mentioned the last time, we had a strategic planning session, and we're looking at changing our logo, updating it, updating our mission. our mission. We've got some new things for board members and our meeting schedule. Instead of meeting every month, we're going to a seven times a year, actually, yeah, every other month and an annual meeting. And also last week I attended We Create, which is an exhibit of art by kindergarteners, fifth and sixth grade. Unbelievable. If you get an opportunity go, it's gonna be running through February. Not only are they charming, the skill level is unbelievable. Halifax Urban Ministries, February eighth, has an empty bowls charity event. I think probably people have heard a lot about it. Reason I mention in it, HAM has partnered with Art House. And so Art House is gonna have some things going on there. For anybody who's interested, you can go to the website and you get lunch on a Saturday for twenty-five dollars. You get soup, bread, salad, and the soup is from ten local restaurants and a ceramic bowl that are made by art students. So it's a great cause and you also support two separate events that help the homeless as well as kids in our area with art. That's it.
I appreciate that. And it's probably a good idea to update things, branding and the like, because Art House will have a significant place in the new community center once we've, we've done that.
That's correct. And they've met with Susan Lavallo and her staff and they got their latest version of the architect's renderings and they're very happy with everything.
Do me a favor, forward me, when, when you have it, the annual meeting date?
February twenty-first.
I would say that you just forwarded it to me.
And I think it's gonna be five-thirty.
It usually is.
And it'll be at Art House.
Alrighty. Brings us to First Step Shelter. Anything going on there, Chase?
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff and nothing pressing to, to do right now. We're gonna be, excuse me.
Nope.
Sure, that was. Stop calling me, Jake. The, I, I can, you know, the positive side, there's, the last check was thirty-four, thirty-four residents right now, twenty men, fourteen women. You know, there's been a voucher that has gone place. They would get, I think they would get two vouchers for, for permanent, for rapid rehousing. And I'll have a better update. I actually didn't realize I was on the, the thing tonight, my apologies. But we're still, I can tell you that from the Port Orange perspective, the first, the, the Pottinger compliance safe zone is, is, nothing takes priority over that, to assure that we have that. The challenge right now is getting Catholic charities to approve. And that's where my frustration is right now, is I feel that as a city, we're, we're kind of in the same situ, or as a board, we're in the same situation that we were with the, with the construction of it. The city of Daytona had all say in construction. Right now, we have a couple of policy decisions that we would like to make as a board, be in the safe zone. We know where we want it, there's consensus. And the food, which right now we're contracting out with the jail, which, you know, our volunteers there are ready to start serving now, but Catholic charities isn't ready to do that yet. So that's where my source of frustration is right now. That was a contract that was, that was signed and agreed to before I got on the board. So that's something I'll be exploring later on. I think there's an opportunity to bring it in locally and eternally and be a little bit more cost-effective and more efficient. But those are, those are issues that I'll be, I'll be bringing up shortly.
Keep hammering away.
Jake, can we, one of the things, and I'm not sure if I asked about this or not, maybe I did, so I apologize. But one of the things I'd like is if the police chief, maybe once a month or quarterly can report back to us and let us know in terms of folks that are being taken out to that shelter, how many are, how many is his department taking out there? And then if they make an attempt to go out there, they didn't qualify for some reason, if we can get that information as well. Because I know there's some parameters they gotta meet or whatever. But it just would be something down the road to be able to track and have that feedback and that information.
Yeah. I know the, I know the regular, I know the, the homeless that you're aware of, that you, the homeless that you know, just say no.
Yeah, and, and I'm okay, I understand that. I just wanna know.
But the ones we don't see are the ones that probably would end up there. So I'll, I'll, I'll query that.
Yeah.
We'll just start putting it in the, in the.
That'd be great.
In the weekly, like we do with the ambulance runs.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Port Orange, South Daytona, Chamber of Commerce. As most of you know, next week being Port Orange Days of the Capitol, I'm gonna be a lead behind because next Wednesday morning, the twenty-ninth, is the annual mayor's breakfast and awards ceremony. Both Bill Hall from South Daytona and I will do some recaps of two thousand and nineteen. I will tease the State of the City address, which is coming up next month a little bit. But afterwards, we also do the Public Safety Awards for the city of South Daytona and for the city of Port Orange. It's really a terrific event. If you are able to attend, we'd love to see you out there. And with that, is there any other business that comes before us this evening?
Yeah, I've got one, if I can, Mayor, real quick, thirty seconds. We had the General Employee Pension Board meeting yesterday. So I know it's not on tonight, but we're kind of out of a rotation there a little bit. But some good news, I just wanted to go ahead and share if I can. So first quarter gains for this fiscal cycle were really, really good for the plan. So we're almost five percent in gains. So that's excellent. The month of December was fabulous by itself at one point eight percent. Total market value is over thirty-six million dollars. And probably some really good information out of that was, brief conversation, but it looks like the anticipated cost for the city to maintain the plan will see a decrease this year by about sixty-six thousand dollars. And we anticipate over the next several and few years, we could see that actually continue to trend that way. It would be great to keep some good market returns.
It only took me ten years of sitting here to hear somebody find us.
Yeah, so.
Who's on that board?
It did, it, yeah. So you guys have got the right person sitting on that board to represent the council. We're doing great. Now, it's, it's, it's a lot of decisions that have been made over time and things like that. And we've all been waiting to see that. And so cautious optimism, but.
Never a straight line up, it's never a straight line down.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. I just wanted to share some good news, that's it.
Good way to end it.
Let me say one more time, any other business come before us this evening? If not, have a good night. Thank you.